Good afternoon. This is the Santa Barbara City Council meeting of September 9, 2025. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Santa Maria?
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Here.
Mayor Protim Friedman?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Present.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
And Mayor Rouse?
Here.
Okay, I need you to read item number one, please.
Item one, employee recognition service award pins.
Ms. McAdoo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a number of service award recognitions. We don't have, we have a couple employees who are here to hear their names be read, which is fantastic, but we don't have for the certificate we normally do for 25 years of service, but we'll congratulate the two that are in the back of the room. So I'll start with five years of service, and I know Maria Schroeder is back there, housing program specialist now under the city administrator's office. We have Christine Espinoza, who's one of our public dispatch, public safety dispatch supervisors in the police department, Alex Valava Midrano, who's an irrigation systems technician in Parks and Recreation, and Greg Goodsell, who is our airport business development supervisor with the airport. So we'll applaud the five years of service. And then next up, we have 10 years of service. We have Timo Rodriguez, building inspector, who I think is in the back there in community development, David Running, a senior waterfront maintenance worker with the waterfront department, and those are 10 years of service. And then we have one employee celebrating 20 years of service, Kelly Brodesson, associate planner in community development. Is she back there too somewhere? And last, but certainly not least, we have three employees celebrating 25 years of service. We have John Turner, who's a battalion chief with the fire department, Scott Waters, a firefighter with the fire department, and Xenon Moran, who's a custodian at the airport. So congratulations to three of them.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor, not at this time.
Thank you very much.
I was just gonna clarify, are we going to switch the order of?
We're not going to. We're gonna leave the agenda items as it is.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, very good. May I have some consent items? Should I read, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Item three, loaned housing authority for $3,500,000 for the development of property located at 400 West Carrillo Street, ordinance adoption, recommendation the council adopt by reading of title only, and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving a loan with the housing authority of the city of Santa Barbara in the amount of $3,500,000 for the development of real property located at 400 West Carrillo Street to be used for affordable housing, to be secured by a deed of trust, and a 90-year affordability control covenant imposed on real property and authorizing the city administrator to execute such agreements, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney. Item four, contract amendment for environmental services for the Los Pecitas and Modoc Roads multi-use path project, ordinance introduction agreement, recommendation the council A introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending and ratifying agreement number 26724, buy-in between the city of Santa Barbara and Brinkham Consultants, Inc., for environmental mitigation and restoration specialist services and related support for the Los Pecitas and Modoc Roads multi-use path project. Item five, introduction of ordinance for water metering for adaptive reuse projects, ordinance introduction, recommendation the council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending section 14.08.150 of the Santa Barbara municipal code relating to water meters for adaptive reuse projects. Item six, advisory group guidelines update resolution the council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting amended guidelines for the city of Santa Barbara advisory groups and rescinding resolution number 24021. Item seven, a resolution denying the appeal and upholding the decision of the Architectural Board of Review regarding the 418 North Milpas Street and 913 through 921 East Gutierrez Street project, resolution, recommendation the council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara denying the appeal of Natasha Torodovic and upholding the decision of the Architectural Board of Review to approve the project at 418 North Milpas Street and 913 through 921 East Gutierrez Street. Item eight, 2025 through 2027 Police Officers Association bargaining unit memorandum of understanding, resolution agreement, recommendation the council A adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the 2025 through 2027 memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and Santa Barbara Police Officers Association, and B adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 25071, position and salary control resolution for fiscal year 2026 affecting the salaries of certain classifications in the Police Officers Association effective September 20th, 2025. And item nine, adoption of a resolution and authorization for cooperative agreement for the Cliff Drive and Milpas Street safety projects, resolution agreement, recommendation the council B adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 25066, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026 to appropriate Measure A Cycle Six grant funds for the Cliff Drive urban highway to complete street transformation and Milpas Street crosswalk safety and sidewalk widening projects. And finally, item 10, approval of professional services agreements with pre-qualified consultants to provide on-call environmental review services for the community development department for five years, resolution agreement, recommendation the council B adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 25066, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026 to approve an increase in fiscal year 2026 revenue and expenditure appropriations in the general fund in the amount of $750,000 for environmental review services agreements funded by advance payments from the project applicant. And that's all the items to read, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. And with a small break in protocol, I'm gonna ask you to read items 13 and 14 into the record, please.
Certainly. Item 13, deputy city administrator employee agreement, and item 14, human resources director employee agreement.
At this point in time, Ms. McAdoo, would you please introduce these people?
I am very pleased and honored to introduce our two newest members of the city's executive team. First, we have Anthony Valdez, who will become the city's first deputy city administrator in the newly constituted role that we, the council approved in the budget. He'll start work on September 15. Most recently, he served as assistant city manager for the city of Bakersfield, and originally was from San Francisco, got a master's in public administration from the University of San Francisco, and a bachelor's in public, political science from American University. And the other gentleman next to him is our new human resources director, Michael Arnoldes, who will be starting on September 22. Michael most recently served as the human resources manager for the city of Santa Monica, also worked for the Ventura County Community College District for a number of years. He holds a master's degree in industrial and organizational psychology from CSU Long Beach and a bachelor's degree in psychology from CSU Fullerton. So I am pleased to welcome both of them to the city team.
And Ashley, if you don't mind, I'd like to have them both come forward and just say hello so we can put a, we can hear the mystery voices for the first times ourselves.
Put them on the spot, their first, first official day. Well.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, Mayor Protim Friedman, and council members, Michael Arnoldes. It's a pleasure and honor to be here this afternoon and to be the next human resources director for the city of Santa Barbara. I have 25 years of experience in human resources, where I have led initiatives that have supported the, the employees of the city and human resources operations to, to ensure that the, sorry, I'm a little nervous at this point, this afternoon, to provide services for the, for the city. And I look forward to bringing my experience and my commitment to organizational excellence to this, to the city of Santa Barbara and continuing to support the, the employees of the city and the work that they do for the community. A little bit about me, I, I was born, raised in Orange County, California. I moved to Ventura County, California about 17 years ago when I accepted the job at the Ventura County Community College District. My partner, Maria, and I raised two boys, one 10 and one 16, and my 16-year-old is just now learning to drive, and yesterday was his first driving lesson. So it's, it's definitely an exciting time in the, in the house right now. My wife, interestingly enough, is the classified personnel director for the Conejo Valley Unified School District, so we are an HR household, and there's, you can imagine what we talk about around the dinner table. But collectively, we are all very excited about this opportunity and getting to know, my family and I getting to know, or become more familiar with the city and the community of Santa Barbara. Once again, I thank you for this opportunity and for putting your trust in me as the next director, or human resources director for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, Anthony Valdez. I am honored to be considered by the city for this incredibly important position. Most recently, worked for the city of Bakersfield, started there right after they had passed a sales tax, and had spent the past six years building out programming, particularly around homelessness and community services. Before that, worked for the San Francisco Department of the Environment as their commission affairs manager, working to manage the commission there. I just wanna say, I know an incredibly, a lot, a lot of work has gone, I'm nervous as well. [laughing] I know a lot of work has gone into planning for State Street and the economic development work that lies ahead for this city. I'm incredibly excited to roll my sleeves up and get to work for you, for Kelly, and alongside the entire team here at the city of Santa Barbara. So thank you very, very much for the honor. Look forward to, to working with you.
Thank you. All right, very good. Thanks very much. We'll go back to business as usual, and I see Ms. Sneddon's lines on the other. Councilmembers have an item to poll. Mr. Jordan?
Number three, please.
Okay, and yours, Ms. Sneddon?
Item six for a question and seven to vote separately.
Okay, very good.
I should be a little more specific. I just have a couple comments to make on number three. I don't need a separate vote.
Okay, very good.
I imagine there might be one.
We'll bring those back up in order when we do all that. So with that being said, may I entertain a motion for items on the, oh, I'm sorry, are there any public commenters that wish to poll an item? The chair aware of panel clerk.
No, Mr. Mayor, no raised hands.
Okay, so may we have a motion for?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Alex Perez just raised his hand.
Regarding consent calendar?
I, I would guess.
Okay, and we, can we get the item that he's interested in?
I will ask him. Alex Perez, do you wish to speak on a consent calendar item, or which item do you wish to speak on?
How's everybody doing? I, I wish to speak on item seven.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll call you at that time.
Okay.
Perfect.
All righty. Okay, so we'll entertain a motion on all items except for three, six, seven.
Seven.
Moved by Friedman?
Second.
Second by Harmon. May we have a vote, please?
Yes, this is a motion by Mayor Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Harmon, for the balance of the consent calendar except for items three, six, and seven. And I'm just gonna take the attendance here, so this first thing you see on your screen is not the vote. Hold, please. And again, this is just attendance. I'll have you vote in one moment. Okay, please go ahead and vote.
We lost it.
Boy, you're quick.
Try that again. Go ahead and vote, please.
Pass you to ask me, thank you very much. With that, we'll go to a report from the ordinance committee, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. We heard an item updating municipal code regulation of parking municipally owned and operated parking lots. It was forwarded to council with a two-to-one vote, and it should be seen in the next two weeks to a month's time will come to council.
All right, very good. And with that, we will move on to general public comment. I don't have any speaker slips in front for general public comment. Are there any speakers online?
We have no raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. With that, we'll go back to the poll consent items. Mr. Jordan, item three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was not here several weeks ago when this item was introduced, but I watched that, and I actually have history with this particular project all the way back to when I was on planning commission. And it started out as a tiny homes, little rolling cart kind of option. But I just, I'm increasing, I'm not gonna stand in the way of this today. I will vote to move it forward, but I'm increasingly uncomfortable with the relationship of general fund dollars to housing and the impact on the rest of the organization. Every dollar that leaves the general fund and goes to another entity or option of housing outside of the normal city is a sacrifice that the rest of the organization is making. That's a dollar that we don't get to spend on salaries, on programs, and on services. And I'm not here to say that housing isn't a problem. I'll even call it a crisis, of course. But I think it, it is reasonable to expect that these type of arrangements meet further scrutiny in the terms of the entire budget, particularly when they are not exclusively a capital A low-income project such as this. This project is crying to me to probably go back to the drawing board. I think it was actually, unfortunately, a prior council that shied away from doing a capital A, all affordable, low-income, or very low-income project due to the reaction from the neighborhood, neighborhood of this location. And we're now looking ironically at a situation where even the housing authority can't do the equivalent of sort of a market-rate project with inclusionary without getting significant and multiple subsidies from the general fund, which should draw your attention to future items today, hopefully. So just wanted to get that, that out there, that I at least will be asking for more look-sees at these type of projects as they come forward to make sure that the sacrifices that the city is making as we redirect dollars are being met by sacrifices by the recipients too. Thank you.
Thank you. And as for me, I'm a supporter, have been always been a supporter of this project, and we have significant skin in the game already, this loan notwithstanding. My problem is just the mechanism by which this came forward and the future damage is gonna do to our general fund budget. So I will be voting on this separately, even though once again, I'm a fan of the housing authority and the project in general. Ms. Sneddon, comment on this item?
Thinking about, just a question, I suppose. It, it's a loan, correct?
Correct.
Repayable with interest?
It's, it's three, three percent interest over 30 years residual receipts loan.
It's, it's not at a specific amount each year, so it's, it's called a residual receipts loan. So if the project generates income at a certain level, then additional amounts above that would then come back to the city as repayment. So repayment varies over the term of the loan.
But at a minimum, it's the original loan amount?
We hope so.
Okay.
Sometimes it has not been, and in some cases, the city has forgiven loans, and there's been a variety of things that have happened with these loans over the years versus full repayment.
Okay, thank you. I'm just, I feel like I'm getting some subtext here that wasn't presented in the documents, or not. So I, I hear, hear the comments, and I just had that question. Thank you.
Well, my, my point is too, with being residual receipts, it won't be, our, our normal thing we break into reserves for anything is to have an immediate payment plan, a priority payment plan.
Yeah, it is, it is not that. It's, I was just explaining what a residual receipts loan is, and then there's been a variety of different mechanisms.
So that's why, that's my caution about this. Like I said, the, the housing authority and the project itself, that's fine. I just don't think we made the right mechanism for loan. Ms. Connect, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to point out that it is 63 rental apartments, seven are restricted to low income, and 55 are restricted to moderate income. So it is a 100% affordable project.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will, I will entertain a motion on the item three, please.
So moved.
Moved by Sneddon, second by Harmon? Oh, Wendy, we got three motions on this, so you figure that made it clear.
All right. For item three, motion by Santa Maria?
Sure.
Seconded by Harmon. Okay, and this is for item three. Please go ahead and vote.
Thank you, Pass. It's six to one, Rouse. Is any, we'll go and move on to item six. Ms. Sned?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I just had a question. There, there are two questions I have on this item. One is the, the removal of the line about the applicant putting their preference of position if they apply for more than one position, and I was just curious about like what, why, I guess, or could it still be left in there? And then the other question I had was really about the role of our charter committees members and about recusals versus abstentions on named committees. And that could be part of a larger discussion, but it is mentioned in this, these updated documents. And so I just wondered about that. What is the role for our commissioners or advisory group members on recusals and abstentions?
Councilmember Sneddon, I, I believe that the only time we refer to recusals is with regard to conflict, financial conflict of interest or other bias-type reasons. I don't know that we speak to abstentions in the document. Maybe the city clerk could?
Yes, and Councilmember Sneddon, and the council, and City Attorney Connect, I don't believe it addresses abstentions without.
Okay, okay, that's okay. I just, so that's not specifically with our advisory board commissioners. I thought I saw a line in there. I could, I could pull the line up, but I could ask that question later. It's, it's a clarifying question. And then the other question was?
What, what page was that on, so we can?
Item six?
Yeah, it's, I'm just, is attachment, it's on the attachment.
Yeah, sorry, I toggled back and forth between my windows here, so I was trying to, the other question on that item was, was just about, there's the removal of the language about an applicant stating their preference if they apply for more than one position. And I actually find it really helpful when they say, my first choice is this, but I would also like these.
Yeah, Councilmember Sneddon, we're, these changes were drafted to provide a little more flexibility and also to work with new software, so we certainly can still inquire of the, of the applicants.
So it wouldn't be on the application, it would be when we interview them, or?
Or I think when we, when they sign up for an interview, we could ask them what their, you know, to rank their preferences of the ones they've applied for. I think the challenge is the new software that we're implementing does not allow for preference or ranking. And so that's the, that's, some of this is to be done so we're, so we can be consistent with the software.
They can still inform the clerk?
They can still inform the clerk.
Exactly.
And, and Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, that line was actually moved to the application section, so it does specifically provide that if they're applying for more than one position to state their preference.
Thank you. That explains both of?
Versus a separate application for each group, yes.
Thank you. And I was just wondering what prompted that, that it's software and that it's efficiency.
So with that, can we get a motion on item six? Friedman? Seconded by Harmon. Vote, please.
And this is for item six, the recommended action, motion by Mayor Protim Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Harmon. Please go ahead and vote.
Pass you to ask me, thank you very much. And item seven, we have a public commenter on that. Three minutes on the item, if you wish to speak, sir.
Alex Perez, you may go ahead.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Alex Perez. I'm a member of the West of the Bay Area. I live in the local area, and live, work, and recreate in the vicinity of the project. I believe that I will be impacted by the environmental impacts of the project. The city should require the project to be built with contractors that will have locally, a, well, will hire locally, sorry, a prevailing wage and utilize apprentices from the certified, state certified apprenticeship training program. Workforce requirements reduce construction-related environment, environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In a recent 2020 report titled Putting California on a High Road, In a recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on a High Road: Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030", the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. The South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that local hire requirements can result in air pollutant reduction. Recently, the State of California reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through the Affordable Housing and High Roads Job Act 2022, otherwise known as Assembly Bill Number 2011, which requires projects pay workers a prevailing wage to hire from state-certified apprenticeship programs for projects meeting certain citing, affordability, and development standards. And that's what I got. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Sneddon.
To be consistent with the votes taken at the time of the meeting, I'll be voting not to uphold the decision. And the findings that I couldn't make were stated in the original item.
All right, very good. And with that, I'll entertain a motion on item seven. Move, Friedman?
Second.
Second by Harmon. Hey, we have the vote, please.
This is a motion for the recommended action. Motion by Mayor Pretem Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Harmon. And that is for item seven. Go ahead and vote, please.
Motion passes four to three with Santa Maria, Sneddon, and Gutierrez dissenting. All right, very good. With that, we'll move along to item 21. If you read that in the record, please.
Item 21, work plan for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Ms. Zachary.
Mayor Rouse, members of the City Council, Jill Zachary, Parks and Recreation Director. I am going to briefly introduce Bronwyn Bradbury, who recently joined our department to be the project manager for development of the master plan. And she will do the presentation.
Mayor Rouse and council members, thank you so much for having us here today. Today, we'd like to discuss the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and get your feedback on the draft goals, the key stakeholder groups, and the work plans. We'll go ahead and start with what is a Parks and Recreation Master Plan? As the name implies, it's a long-range plan for our system of parks and recreation facilities. And it also addresses the recreational and social programs that that system supports. The plan would inventory and assess the system, identify community needs, and guide and prioritize future development. We're developing the plan with significant public outreach as part of the process so that we can identify what the community wants out of this plan. With this plan, we aim to address what residents want to see in their system. So we're looking for a lot of feedback to drive what we put into the plan. The city has a dynamic system of parks, open spaces, trails, recreation facilities, and community buildings. And due to Santa Barbara's rich history, the park system includes locations, artifacts, and buildings with historic and cultural significance. As seen on this map, the city has a variety of parks, which includes various types. The city categorizes parks by type for planning purposes. And the various park categories are shown in this table. Park categories are based on the quality and characteristics of each park, and they guide the type of development that's permitted in each park type. The categories include beach parks, which provide access to our beaches. We also have community parks. These are intended to serve the entire community. These are the types of parks that you might travel to because of the unique amenities they have. They are also the parks where the city holds a lot of events. We also have neighborhood parks, which serve the local community. These are generally parks that people walk to from their homes. And they often include playgrounds, open fields, other neighborhood-serving uses. We have passive parks. These support passive uses like walking, picnicking, and bird watching. They are often ornamental in nature, like Alice Keck Memorial Gardens, and they may contain cultural and historical resources. We also have a number of sports facilities. These are parks that support a variety of active outdoor recreation. These are where we house our athletic fields, tennis courts, and other sports infrastructure. And then we also have open space parks. These are largely undeveloped parks that are protected and managed as natural environments. And they support passive uses like walking, hiking, and bird watching. We also have two regional parks that are intended to serve people throughout the region. They can have special uses, like the Santa Barbara Zoo. And they can also support major organized sporting events that may draw participants from all around the region. Overall, on this list, we have 64 parks and open spaces. If you add up those numbers, you'll see a 67, but that's because three of them support two different types of uses. The city also has 18 community buildings, including some that are historic and iconic. These buildings support a variety of recreation uses and community services. We have recreation facilities like the Creo Recreation Center and the Lawn Bowl Clubhouses. And we also have community buildings like the Louise Laurie Davis Center and West Side Center. We also have a couple of community buildings that we lease to partners who provide youth services, like the Haley Street Youth Center and 1235 Teen Center. All of these community buildings that you see listed here, along with the parks that were in the prior list, comprise that physical system of parks and recreation facilities that will be covered by the master plan. Our aim with the master plan is to do future planning based on the entire system, so system-wide planning. This means that when we identify community needs, we're able to consider where in the system can we address these needs. So this is different from planning park by park. Instead of planning for single parks and deciding what can happen in that space, we'll look at the system as a whole, what the community needs are, and where we can address those. The city has performed system-wide planning efforts in the past, starting in 1975, when the city kicked off development of their first master plan. This is referred to as the initial master plan in the staff report. This plan was finalized in October 1980 and adopted in March 1981. The city also passed a resolution to update the plan every two years, which was a very ambitious goal because it's such a large effort to look across the whole system, evaluate everything that's there. The city did complete an update four years later in 1985. This was the last update of the master plan. The city did, however, pursue other system-wide planning efforts, including in 1989, when the city developed the Parks and Facility Needs Assessment. This is similar to a master plan and had some of the same elements, but it wasn't quite as comprehensive. Then in 1995, the city attempted to update the 1985 plan, but that effort was not completed. The city performed another comprehensive assessment to the system, of the system, in 2005. This was a baseline analysis that was done in support of the city's general plan update. And this assessment, although it assessed the system, did not include recommendations for what sort of improvements they want to see in the future, like you would see in a master plan. Given that the 1985 master plan update contained a five-year implementation plan, the city has effectively been operating without a master plan since around 1990. Since that time, absent a master plan, the city has successfully advanced a number of individual park and recreation facility improvements that were in response to community demand and infrastructure reinvestment needs. The city's also developed site-specific master plans for Ortega Park, Dwight Murphy Field, and Eastside Neighborhood Park. However, we believe we can more effectively address the community's future needs with a system-wide planning effort. With the master plan, we aim to plan for system updates and expansions to meet known and identified existing needs and to also address future needs such as increased population density and responding to climate change losses. The goals of the master plan fall into two categories. The first set of goals relate to the planning process and developing the plan. And the second set relates to the final document and how we would use the plan. The planning process and goals include mobilizing and engaging the community to understand their needs, identifying current and future park and recreation needs, facilitating inter-organization cooperation, such as bringing to life new joint use agreements for certain spaces, also inspiring new ideas and partnerships, evaluating the feasibility of proposed ideas, and assessing existing and potential funding sources. So these are all things that would happen as we're developing the plan through the process. Next are the master plan goals in terms of what the document would provide. First, it would provide a roadmap of system improvements to meet the identified needs. It would align resources with community values and trends. And what we mean by this is ensuring that we invest in the improvements our community wants to see in the system. It would increase access and ensure equitable distribution of resources. This includes consideration of accessibility, transportation, and also the distribution of park resources throughout the city. Another goal is to support funding efforts for redevelopment and expansion. In the future, we would be referencing the master plan when we apply for grants because it documents our community's long-term vision and goals and is based on rigorous data analysis and community input. Given the importance of the public engagement process, we're next going to look at the key stakeholder groups that we plan to engage through the master planning process. We identified six types of stakeholder groups. The first one are department partners, which are organizations we work with to help provide recreation and community services to the public. This includes facility operators, event organizers, lessors of city property, and service providers. The next group are user groups, which are groups that make use of the park system, including youth groups, summer camps, athletic leagues and classes, and recreational users. The next big group is special interest groups. These are groups with common concerns and interests, including neighborhood associations, retirement communities, social service providers, CHUMASH community members, and groups supporting individuals with special needs. Next, we have the nonprofit organizations that would likely be interested in this sort of plan. And that includes environmental, educational, cultural, historical, and philanthropic organizations. Our park system also affects businesses in that the quality and breadth of our park system is part of what brings people to Santa Barbara. So we would also reach out to the Santa Barbara Regional Chamber of Commerce, Greater Santa Barbara Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Visit Santa Barbara, and Downtown Santa Barbara. We would also reach out to other government agencies, such as affected city departments, school districts, and elected and appointed officials, such as yourselves. So we'll be working closely with these stakeholder groups to understand their needs and address their concerns as we develop the master plan. This slide lays out the key components of the master plan. The first one is an inventory and assessment, which is a comprehensive summary of the system, the programs it supports, and the existing conditions, including levels of service and current maintenance needs. The community profile includes an evaluation of the climate, population characteristics, and land use trends to inform the existing and future needs. And then look at the needs assessment. This component evaluates needs in the park system based on existing use of the system, demographic shifts, and recreation trends. This part of the assessment also includes evaluation of underserved areas, anticipated future demand, and any gaps in service that we identify. The funding strategies component includes identification and evaluation of existing and potential future funding sources. This component also includes an economic analysis evaluating the impacts of park and recreation facilities to our local economy. Lastly, and importantly, the plan will include goals and recommendations. So this will be clearly articulated goals and objectives for the park and recreation system, and specific recommendations such as facility upgrades, development of new parks, and land acquisition strategies. So these key master plan components inform what we have for our work plan. Here's the different steps of the work plan. We've largely completed the first one, project initiation, which includes development of this work plan that's summarized in these slides. We're currently working on the inventory of existing resources and programs. This phase entails a comprehensive analysis of the city's system of parks and recreation facilities, including the existing conditions, ADA compliance, and visitation. The next phase will be the evaluation of existing settings, which involves factors outside of the Parks and Recreation Department, such as community demographics and dynamics, and overlapping plans and policies. Once we have all this background information, we'll begin the community engagement and needs assessment. This phase will include surveys, interviews, meetings, and workshops, as well as a recreation trends analysis. Once we complete all these prior phases, we'll develop the recommendations and action plan. And then, lastly, we will develop the draft master plan. So the proposed schedule is laid out by work plan phase. Here's the work plan phases that we just talked about in the schedule. We anticipate the duration to complete the draft plan would be two years total. And we're currently in the second phase, inventory of existing resources and programs. This schedule includes four council meetings, including this one to review the work plan. Given the importance of the community engagement element for this plan, we also propose that council review the public participation plan at the beginning of the outreach process. This schedule shows our community engagement and needs assessment starting in summer slash fall of 2026. Though we do anticipate we would start some of that outreach in spring. So it'd happen a little bit earlier, right as we come with the public participation plan, partially because we have a lot of events that happen in that time, and we want to start showing up and letting the community know that this is happening. So that's our overall timeline. And what we're looking for now is any questions that you have about it, and also if you have any input about the preliminary goals or the key stakeholder groups. Right now, we're not looking at specific stakeholders so much as what those key groups are, overall types of stakeholders, although you're welcome to share either. And then, any comments on the work plan?
All right, thank you very much. First of all, I invite public comments, as it is a non-action item. Is anyone online for comment? Madam Clerk, I have no speaker slips here in the room.
No hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. Since this is an informational item, we'll entertain anyone that has a question and/or comment. You can combine them, it's your pleasure. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great start. Looking forward to this. Had an opportunity to give you a shout-out in a newsletter last week. So kind of disappointed nobody's in here public commenting, but such is my life. Couple suggestions, I think the key part to me, this is the outreach process, of course. So, and I think your stakeholder groups are great. You've caught everybody that I can think of. Specific suggestions I have would be, in the prime of summer in 202026, when we have everything else going on, is to try and set up some primetime pop-ups at parks. So in my world, that would be Shoreline, La Mesa, and Douglas Family Preserve. And I would be happy to man one of those, regardless of whether a real employee is there. Because I'm, you know, I'm at Douglas Family Preserve five times a day anyhow, so. But same thing, too, to take advantage of other events, too, like Tuesday afternoon, a booth there, or Saturday afternoon at Farmer's Market. I am just, whatever, don't know what I'm talking about. But I would bet there's, in that crowd, there is a lot of parks users, just without knowing that I'm right. And then pick on the major events, too. Earth Day, Solstice, Fiesta, Maritime Festival. There's probably some other ones that you would think of. Those are frequent for me that have booths. And you could put a booth up, probably leverage the graciousness of the city to accommodate those festivals and get a booth space to also get some input from people. Some of the great input I think you'll get from some of those are not just from people who live here, but people who frequently come here, whether they're coming just from the central coast area or even out of town. I'm guessing there's a ton of people who don't live here who go to Shoreline Park and places like that. So to get some input from them. That would be my only suggestions, and literally. That would be my only suggestions, and literally, really, you get to next summer and you need somebody with a sandwich board and a table and a dog and some dog snacks to sit down at the parks. I'll be happy to volunteer my time to help out.
Ms. Nedden?
Thank you. Likewise, I love that idea of pop-ups at parks, and there are so many amazing parks. It'd be a great way to get the community to come to the parks and see what it is we're talking about. So I think that's a fantastic idea. Welcome aboard, Ms. Bradbury, and this is exciting. I'm really happy to see this item. It's kind of hard to believe, I mean, 1985 is the year I graduated eighth grade, and that was a really long time ago. So to not have been updated in all that time and with the efforts, and still so many amazing projects have happened, like Cabrillo Pavilion, Plaza Del Mar, Ban Shell. I mean, Ms. Zachary, amazing projects have happened even without a master plan, but with our world-class parks and facilities, I think it's high time that there is this master plan to give it the planning it deserves, to put all those pieces in place. So very, very excited. I think a few things here, because so much time has passed since our last updates, and I'm sure you're touching on these things, but, you know, climate change, changing climate, changing water needs, usage, but also, these are comments in a time when we've, as a community, conserve so much water that we use the same amount of water that we used in the '60s with 30,000 more people, perhaps we can sprinkle Delegara Plaza or some other grassy areas with some water as well. And so as we're looking at parks, I sort of want to put out there the idea of expanding the parks that we have, like in that slide, the first slide you showed with the map and the green areas. And I say this as, I mean, District Four representative, we have an incredible number of open spaces and parks and green areas, but in the very downtown core, there's really, especially if you take out Delegara Plaza, there's really very little greenery. And so I'm just reminded that when we did do the State Street Master Plan roadshow to all the advisory boards and out to the community, something that came up repeatedly was the request to look at a park downtown. So like, you know, a formal park downtown. So I just wanted to kind of put that back in there as something to consider, not just the maintenance of what we have when you do the outreach, but also, you know, possibly, do we have space for an urban park more in the downtown core? I'll just reiterate, too, with Measure I, it seemed like the voters in the community agreed that parks were a priority, so I think that also supports this master plan. And then with stakeholder groups, you know, I'd like to see that, and, you know, you did such a fabulous job with this with Ambassador Park and engaging CHUMASH community. It's really a, it's been referred to as an example of how to engage community, and I think particularly for CHUMASH community to be involved throughout, and especially in historically significant parks to the CHUMASH, that it not be one stakeholder that's met with once, but maybe a more integrated stakeholder. And then there are some parks, neighborhood parks, that have particular cultural neighborhood significance, and that might take, again, a different balance of outreach so that neighbors and community members who particularly use certain parks maybe have more engagement in neighborhoods where they're used. But this is fantastic and very, very excited, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real brief, this is a long time coming. 1985, yes, it was a long time ago. I just wanted to congratulate you on bringing this forward. I think it's much needed. It will help in a lot of different ways, including getting grants in the future from federal or state grants. It'll position us for, in particular, proposition funding from the state. Just a couple of items looking at, and we talked about this when we met, one is on the outreach. Two, include the users with surveys, such as recreation in particular, because that's a really good feedback from summer camp parents of summer camp users or adult recreation, because the other part of it, too, is making sure that as part of this plan, we're looking at that our programs are affordable and that the public can use them without it costing so much that they're not going to. So how we can incorporate that. The other two issues, one is Ortega Park, and that is an ongoing issue with the master plan redevelopment, but that ties into a larger issue with the parks is swimming, adequate swimming facilities, so that with the new master plan there and the new pool, we also need to make sure that that park remains its intended use, which is more of a neighborhood park and not become a regional destination for swimming. At the same time, we're looking at other swimming facilities as well, to get that balance so that we don't just put everything, the lack of swimming access facilities in that park and not being able to properly staff it or account for it. And then the other larger issue is in the north part of the city, District Five in particular, there's a lot of new housing development that's going to be coming in in the next decade with the redevelopment of the Cumbre Plaza and others, and there aren't very many parks and open spaces in that part of town. So to the extent that we can proactively look for opportunities there for parks and recreation opportunities to meet the growth that would be expected with, in particular, the Cumbre Plaza and others, would be much needed because it's going to put a strain on the resources in that part of town. But otherwise, this is great, a great first step, and, you know, parks and libraries, they're the heart and soul of a city, and as we try to get more connections with everyone, that's where people go, is naturally outdoors to the parks. And so I'm pleased that this is moving forward, and with those kind of focus areas, something I'd be looking forward to having more input on as the time comes. Thank you.
All right, very good. If there are further comments or questions, this was an informational item only, so thank you very much. You will move on to item 22, if you drew that in the record. Please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, item 22, Municipal Code Amendments to Incentivize Adaptive Reuse Projects Ordinance Introduction. Recommendation that Council A, determine that the ordinance is consistent with the general plan, and B, introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by adding Section 30.185.045 pertaining to regulations for adaptive reuse projects.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name's Dana Volk. I'm a long-range project planner, here to talk to you about the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance. The recommendation today is that council determine that the ordinance is consistent with the general plan and introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by adding Section 30.185.045. With that, I do want to remind us all today that this Adaptive Reuse Ordinance is to implement the 2023/2031 Housing Element. It is Housing Element Program Number One to facilitate the conversion of non-residential buildings to housing, to fulfill Goal Number One in the Housing Element, to create new housing. The timeline to complete this effort is the end of this year, December 2025, which we're on track to do.
Let me interrupt you for one minute. I'd just like to announce that for speakers on this item, I have some submitted here in person, and that will take speaker slips until 3:00 for both online hands raised and in-person speaker slip submissions. Thank you, please continue.
So adaptive reuse is the conversion of existing buildings from their original use to a new use, to accommodate those new use within the existing shell. Right now, in the City of Santa Barbara, we already allow this. It's called change in use, but over the last five years or so, it's become more and more popular as the vacancy rates of commercial spaces such as office and retail have increased, and the demand for housing has also increased. So it's a great translation of existing spaces to a new use, commercial to residential. This is already allowed, like I mentioned, as change in use anywhere in the city that we have mixed-use zones, and those are zones where both non-residential use and multi-unit residential use is allowed, which is a lot of our city. This effort has been ongoing since, about a year ago, actually. Last month in 2024 July, we met with City Council and Planning Commission in a joint work session to discuss adaptive reuse. Later in 2024 in the fall, we met with both internal focus groups as well as external focus groups to talk about the ordinance and craft it for our city. And in Planning Commission, late last year, we brought a draft ordinance to them for discussion. Kicking off in 2025, we reconvened a lot of those focus groups that we'd spoken with in the fall. That included internal departments and division staff, such as Sustainability and Resilience. We talked with Public Works Water Resources about water main regulations, Creek staff and Sustainability and Resilience about stormwater, State Street Master Plan, and Community Vitality initiatives, just to make sure that this ordinance was really dovetailing well into a lot of the other efforts that we had ongoing. We also presented at the Historic Landmarks Commission and Architectural Board of Review, and in June went back to Planning Commission with a proposed ordinance, which they ultimately recommended with a few adjustments in their motion. And just last month, or two months ago now, in July, we went to Ordinance Committee for their forwarding to council today. I will note that the ordinance has changed significantly because of all these touchpoints we've had, not only with the community, but with our different boards and commissions. So with that, I'm going to jump into an overview of the ordinance itself. It begins with a definition of adaptive reuse projects, and those are a change of use of all or any portion of an existing building, a building envelope, sorry, from non-residential use to one or more new residential units. So we're really looking at how do we take these existing buildings we have in our city and put new housing inside of them. There are a few key topics I want to go over that the adaptive reuse does require of the projects that would be considered adaptive reuse. The first is that conversion from the existing non-residential use, that is at least a five-year-old building, and it must be creating new residential use inside, so creating housing units inside. There is a limitation that a new hotel use cannot be proposed as part of the adaptive reuse project. An existing hotel use can be converted in full or in part, but a new hotel use cannot be proposed as part of the adaptive reuse project, and that project must occur within the existing shell of the building. There is some limited allowance for additions for fire code and such, but really, we're focusing on those existing shells and putting new housing inside of them. And the biggest change since we last presented this to the full city council is that this ordinance is allowed anywhere in the inland portion of the city that multi-unit residential use is allowed. So a lot of area shown here in both dark blue and the light blue. The dark blue area, which is really our commercial core and corridors, are those area of town that are the mixed-use zones, so non-residential and residential use. The lighter blue would also be areas that this adaptive reuse ordinance would be allowed because these allow multi-unit residential uses in them. You notice there's a lot of gray. That's our areas of town that don't allow multi-unit residential, such as single-unit zones, and then coastal zones, since this is a Title 28, or Title 30, I'm sorry, Title 30 Amendment, not Title 28. Adaptive reuse projects, if we've met all those requirements I just talked about, and they're in the areas I just showed, get these for development incentives by right. So these change the development standards for these particular projects. The most impactful one is the change to the density limitations. So projects that would be considered adaptive reuse would have no maximum residential density. As many units as they could fit inside of a building with a minimum unit size and a maximum average unit size, they could propose regardless of the maximum density allowed on that site. So if a building could fit 14 units inside, put 14 units inside, even if the density only allows 10. We're really trying to maximize and facilitate that creation of housing. Two more standards that are incentives here happen to do with open yard, which is purely a residential requirement. So an existing non-residential building was not constructed to meet those requirements and therefore may not be able to, so we're trying to facilitate, again, that conversion. Parking standards for vehicles are also slightly adjusted, and no additional parking would be required on the site more than what is already on the site when they begin this process. And then the last incentive has to do with setbacks in allowing that residential unit in the existing building in a setback. There are also a few development standards and requirements I do want to touch upon. Some of these have to do specifically with adaptive reuse projects, shown on the left of the screen, and some are existing requirements that apply to all projects that would still apply to adaptive reuse projects. So the two special standards for adaptive reuse requirements have to do with a maximum average unit size, as well as a requirement for an activating use on the ground floor of State Street in the State Street Master Plan area. And the existing requirements that these adaptive reuse projects would have to meet, just like other projects have to meet in the city, are inclusionary housing, the stormwater management program, a minimum unit size, as well as bicycle parking. I did mention vehicle parking is one of the incentives, bike parking is not. The final component of the ordinance I'm going to overview today happens to deal with the permit review process. So some of these projects may not require a land use decision or any kind of planning review, depending on how they design it, but there's no land use decision for any of these incentives I just walked through. And if they don't trigger design review by an exterior change, feasibly, a project could go straight to building permit. That basically means there's going to be fewer fees and a faster permitting duration because there's going to be potentially less permitting, depending on how they decide to do their project. Additionally, the pre-application and concept review requirement, which is something for larger AUD, that's Average Unit Size Density, incentive program projects is waived. Do want to touch upon the Ordinance Committee hearing, which occurred on July 29th. They did elect to forward this ordinance to you today, two to one, as the dissenting member, Councilmember Jordan, shared a few of his thoughts on items to consider for changes listed here, and I'm going to walk through them very quickly, although they are further explained in the CAR as well. So the first, maximum average unit sizes. I will note that staff had proposed larger maximum average unit sizes to Planning Commission than the size you see in your ordinance before you today. Part of Planning Commission's motion in recommending this ordinance was to reduce the size of the max, reduce the maximum average unit size, there we go, for these different types of units. So in your CAR, we do walk through some of the logic that went into calibrating those sizes, that has to do with what the AUD program currently allows, also trying to allow some flexibility for these projects, which are reusing existing floor plates, and so may not be as efficient as new construction, as well as some requirements that condominium units do require within the unit, and therefore may need more space than a rental unit. So we, staff does support the 2,000-square-foot ownership unit maximum average unit size or a 1,200-square-foot for a rental project, which was proposed to Planning Commission and then reduced in their motion. The second topic here is the glarround floor non-residential use space on State Street. Staff did align that 11 blocks of State Street with the State Street Master Plan, and we would recommend maintaining that alignment. If, at a later date, the State Street Master Plan area was changed to be less or more changed, then this requirement could then be aligned with that change. For inclusionary, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to click that button. For inclusionary housing, I do want to note, staff is working on a separate work effort to evaluate the inclusionary housing ordinances and then propose ordinance amendments. That study is very close and should be released this fall. In it, we do look holistically at all of the inclusionary housing for both ownership and rental across the city, and really would suggest that no change be made to inclusionary housing requirements for adaptive reuse ordinances. Instead, wait towards that conversation where we have the data to back up any kind of findings we want to make and any changes we are going to pursue going forward. And then the last item here is the stormwater management program. This is something that all projects in the city, residential and non-residential, must comply with, and I will note that in 2020, they did revise this program to make it more flexible, equitable, and effective while still meeting state permitting and the Clean Water Act. We do have some staff here from Creeks that manage that, if we do want to go into it a little bit further, but don't recommend any changes to that for adaptive reuse. With that, I'm going to get into kind of the next steps for this ordinance. We did conduct environmental review, and I'm going to read this straight from your council agenda report, so I get it correct. "Staff has determined this action qualifies for an exemption from further environmental review under Section 15061B3, general rule of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, because it can be seen with certainty that the ordinance will not have a significant effect on the environment." Additionally, all ordinance amendments here in the city must be found consistent with the general plan, and "staff has determined that the proposed ordinance is consistent with the general plan policies and programs that encourage adaptive reuse, a mix of land uses, sustainable neighborhood planning, and infill housing." With that, I will close on the recommendation for today's hearing and the possible motion language that staff proposes if we do want to adjust the maximum average unit sizes. With that, thank you. That concludes staff's presentation.
All right, very good. Come back to...
Come back to questions from council. Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question. And, thank you. So I understand that under the adaptive reuse ordinance, they cannot reuse it to become hotels, but in areas that are zoned for hotel uses, you could still make a hotel, you just would do it not under this ordinance, correct?
That is correct, yes. So we are not changing any of the allowed uses anywhere in the city. We're just saying for the creation of housing, you get these development incentives, and you can't do the hotel conversion as part of this project, but that does not limit the hotel use at a later time.
Okay, so when we're thinking through, like, the various incentives that may exist for a property owner or a potential developer, that hotel use is still in the mix, it's just under a separate framework than the adaptive reuse one?
Correct. And we are, as staff, also looking at short-term rental, which is a hotel use, as you guys recently saw it last month. So we are considering these adaptive reuse projects as we're working through that ordinance amendment as well and kind of how they interplay, just for adaptive reuse, those projects to get those incentives I walked through cannot be creating a new hotel use.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Ned.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. First, I just want to say what an excellent presentation that was. And it's, it's really nice that when the comments that came out of ordinance committee each had a staff response. I really appreciate that a lot. And so one of the questions I had was about that and the maximum average unit sizes. So I'm actually supportive of that with Councilmember Jordan's suggestion of that, and that was staff's initial recommendation. So if you could talk a little bit about that, the flexibility of that. And then the other question I have is, how is 10% calculated for the inclusionary? So, I mean, with odd sizes and shapes, does it matter how big the units are? Like, I'm picturing if we tried to carve up the top of City Hall here, we would have some places that were large, some were small, and some, so how do you calculate 10% inclusionary?
Councilmember Ned, these actually kind of relate, so I'll start with the first. Max average unit sizes, like you mentioned, the ordinance you see before you today has the Planning Commission motion recommended sizes of 1,200 and 800 square feet for owner and rental. Those are calculated the same way the average unit size density incentive program would calculate average unit sizes, right? If I have one small unit and one large unit, when I average them, I get a medium-sized unit. When we were working on the adaptive reuse ordinance, we wanted to keep that same thinking because every project is a little bit different, every developer is a little bit different. You know, they need to calibrate what they're bringing to the market appropriately, and that's, that's their expertise. So we are trying to give flexibility in what those max average unit sizes were for these different types of tenures. Knowing that these are adaptive reuse projects, the floor plates may be a little bit funky or skewed, you're not as efficient in your layouts of those units if you've already got a shell you must build within. So we enlarged the maximum average sizes that we proposed for these adaptive reuse projects. With that in mind, it also was accommodating condo units tend to be larger historically, as well as there are some requirements for condominium units in our ordinance that we needed to account for. So the number we brought to Planning Commission was reduced by Planning Commission. Ordinance forwarded the same Planning Commission number, but as you mentioned, Councilmember Jordan did bring that up. And so staff was bringing back the numbers that we had put together for council's direction if they would like to adjust those larger. As for the 10% inclusionary, that's done by the total number of units, regardless of the size of the units. So again, one large, one small, that would be two units. Two mediums, that would be two units.
And, and, and so I guess my question is, so many of these adaptive reuse projects, I'm imagining may only be able to create one new living place, or, and so what is 10% of one unit?
So we've got, the inclusionary housing ordinances do have a minimum threshold for how many units a project must be creating in order to trigger that requirement. For ownership projects, that's two units. So if you're creating one unit, you will not trigger the ownership inclusionary requirement. It's a two units, and then rental is five units. So one through four unit projects don't trigger inclusionary requirements for rental. So small projects like that don't have to do it. So if it's a one unit, it just doesn't even matter what 10% of one unit is.
Right, okay. And, and so just for simplicity, the way we're calculating it is just based on how we generally calculate for our inclusionary?
Correct. No changes are proposed to the inclusionary housing requirements in any capacity under the adaptive reuse ordinance.
Okay, but then that could be addressed later?
And, exactly. So that is, that is what we are suggesting, right? We are doing this deep dive into the existing inclusionary housing ordinances with a consultant looking at, you know, what are they? How do they align with other jurisdictions and comparable jurisdictions? How do they impact a development? What do we need to be aware of in terms of creating them? We will be coming back to you all and Planning Commission for your guidance and feedback as we are crafting these amendments, once we get that study completed, which should be coming this fall. So we would recommend as staff that we wait to amend the inclusionary housing requirements holistically for the entire city and not just for adaptive reuse projects solely, but we could.
I completely agree. Thank you. And then could you just be very overt with me for the, for the max average unit size? What is the current staff recommendation today?
Yes. Staff recommends 1,200 square feet max average for a rental and 2,000 max average for an ownership project.
I'm glad I asked. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. Thank you for the, the presentation. A few questions, so I'll just get right to it. I wanted to follow up on the questions from Member Harmon about the hotel conversions. So you could, a property owner could still use the traditional process for hotels. Is there, through that process, are there any requirements for employee housing or affordable housing or any, or any offsets if they were to choose to do that instead of housing?
Councilmember Friedman, to my knowledge, there are not any requirements if a project wants to use the allowable now change in use process to create a hotel use for any kind of housing component.
So there's no affordable units or anything required, or any in-lufies?
Not at present, no, but.
And so there, and also, this gets into the discussion later, which is going to come up. And there would be no, in that case, there wouldn't be any covenants or anything, since there's no affordable units required with a hotel.
Correct.
On the...
Councilmember Friedman, just to be clear, if the, if it was an existing hotel and it was converting, say, half of the units to housing, and there was more than 10 units of housing, then it would trigger the inclusionary for the housing?
Under the, under this ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. So they would, so if they wanted to, if you had a hotel that wanted to convert to housing, they would still need to do an inclusionary if it's the 10 units?
Okay.
That's, that's helpful.
Yeah, and I will say that would be...
Because you want to encourage those as well, not just...
Even if they're not considered an adaptive reuse project, that's a requirement for any housing developed in the city. We're just aligning with an existing requirement for this ordinance.
Okay, so for, so just to clarify then, for any, it's, it's a commercial, going through the traditional process, not this, and they did more than 10 units, they would have to do one inclusionary then?
10% of the units, correct.
If it was 10 units, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So there, there would be a, there would be an inclusionary in there, okay? That's going towards housing, but not the reverse, if they were converting to a hotel. Okay. On the, the issue of the square footage, just a, a question on that, I think it's a good point that, that staff is raising, and I think a lot of others have gone out there for trying to create more housing. I'm trying to understand how a max goes, if the goal is to give unlimited density, wouldn't a max or a minimum put density in there? Or put a, or give you, it wouldn't be unlimited density anymore because you have to meet, meet that?
Councilmember Friedman, it wouldn't be unlimited density because you would be constrained by the existing building envelope, right? I can only fit so many things inside of a space. How you design the size and the fit of those things in that space is up to the developer. There are minimum residential unit sizes, they're from building code, they already are in our zoning ordinance, those would apply to these projects. The maximum average is with the intention of not creating a two-story penthouse somewhere, right? We are trying to facilitate the creation of housing. But again, it's a maximum average, so depending on the developer's choice as they're developing a project, they, they could elect to do a large unit and a small unit to still meet that, that maximum average. There is a minimum, it has to do with kind of like life safety and quality of life within that.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify the maximum, because the, the minimum, obviously, for safety codes, and you don't, we need different types of housing, different sizes, and the max prevents them just from, like you said, be, becoming, you know, 3,000 or 4,000 square foot units versus if you, if it's an average, then you have to have the offsets for actual housing that people would live in versus something major. So just something that had come up, because there was, there was a question on why we needed an average maximum, the minimum I get because it's in the building code. And then just to go back to any inclusionary units that would go through this, it's a 90-year covenant, is that correct?
Yes.
And then, maybe this might be for Ms. Dicey, but I'm not sure. So right, right now, it, just in our inclusionary in general, we were talking about how if there's not, if someone is coming in with a project and they wanted to do nine units, they would, just in general now or in this ordinance, if they want to do nine units, they would just have to pay an in-luffy, but if they wanted to go to 10, they would have to pay an inclusionary. So, right, or they would have to, I'm sorry, they would have to add the inclusionary?
And that onsite unit, correct.
Yeah, an onsite unit. So in that case, there wouldn't be an incentive to add that inclusionary unit, so they would just stay at the nine units. In general, is that, is that an accurate statement?
I'm hesitant to say yes, because we don't know all that a developer is considering when they're putting together their project. We did do a pretty deep dive in the average unit size density incentive program progress report two years ago now. Unfortunately, I haven't read it since we wrote it two years ago, so I can't say for certain, but I don't remember there being a, a big trend towards that kind of threshold planning. But I'd have to go back and check, and I could let you know.
Okay. So there, there is that question that comes up, because that is something that...
Of course, yes.
It's brought up through the correspondence we've received, is, say, they want to put in 10 or 11 units, but one of them has to be an inclusionary unit, they might just stay at nine, and then you're losing those couple of units. So, just a couple more questions. And then, let's see, I think that is... That's all my questions for now, thanks.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple more, too. I'm going to go back to that maximum and minimum unit size. Is there just a number that is a minimum use in unit size for, for multi-unit residential? And what is it?
There is...
Is it like 400 or 500 square feet?
It's 220 square feet for a studio unit and 400 for one bedroom or above.
Okay, so it's pretty small.
It's pretty small.
Okay. So the, I mean, if somebody came in and needed or wanted to do a mix of micro-studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, they would have the option within a 400-square-foot, obviously put some pretty small units in there if they, they were, they just felt they could market those, right?
Councilmember Jordan, that is correct.
Okay. And then the 200, the 2025 requirement for the housing element that you're referencing, whose requirement is that and who's watching it?
Can I clarify? Do you mean the timeline to complete this effort?
The timeline to complete this is our, our timeline, somebody else's timeline? Is somebody poised to make sure that we do that? What does that mean?
Councilmember Jordan, so when we drafted the housing element, all the programs, and this was required by HCD, we needed to put a timeline for completion. So we kind of kept it more to quarters. So we said quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, quarter four. So this one was, at the time, quarter four, 2025. Every year, we provide a report to HCD, and one of the spreadsheets is reporting on how we're doing on that implementation. So HCD reads those, and we have, we've never heard back from them about those deadlines, but I think as long as, for most of these programs, we are making progress and meeting our deadlines to date.
And on occasion, you have shown that we have not met those deadlines, correct?
There are a couple of programs that we've just gotten started, we might be a little bit late. I haven't heard anything from HCD, any problems with that. And like I said, we're doing our best to make progress on every single program. A lot of them are phased as well, so we had phase one, two, three, and four, and we've partially completed.
I have your get out of jail card for, with all of the legislation that comes down from the state to use anytime you need to get more time, right? So I'm ready to print that up for you. So, and then I want to know what happened since the 2024 joint work session with Planning Commission and council, when it was pretty clear to me that the room said, we want staff to pursue no inclusionary in the downtown corridor as part of this effort. And so how are we here today with including inclusionary?
Councilmember Jordan, I have to say, my memory must not be as clear as yours of that hearing, so I don't recall that exactly.
I can tell you there was a, well, the majority of council members and a majority of planning commissioners that all said that same thing. And I know you'll get four nods up here, at least from the council members, that said, we need to recognize the downtown corridor as not just being a housing effort, but also an economic effort that drives both people and economic vitality back to downtown. And we wanted staff to pursue the adaptive reuse in a form that did not include inclusionary in that corridor. And I think I brought this up at my briefing meeting, not, didn't get a good answer there too, so I'm asking it again today. And so I just wonder where that went sideways.
I don't know if I'd say it went sideways. We are working on this adaptive reuse element, or, sorry, adaptive reuse ordinance as part of the Program One of the housing element. The inclusionary is being studied under a separate one, they are happening concurrently. So I will say we are evaluating it, but maybe not necessarily under the vehicle that you would suggest we evaluated under, but it is being evaluated as part of that inclusionary housing study under, sorry, under HE 13, which again, should hopefully come to you soon. It does address, you know, what is the impact of inclusionary housing requirements. It does pay attention to adaptive reuse projects, since they are a little bit special. But it was very conscientiously a separate work effort because the inclusionary housing ordinance applies citywide, and so we're, we're looking at it at a citywide holistic basis.
Okay. I have a different memory. And then my last question, I think I brought this up at my briefing meeting too, and there was also not a good answer to this, and that's what happens when some yahoo comes in with a bonus density project, attempting to apply it to the adaptive reuse, and starts to ask for things like another story or additional square footage that would normally trigger a stop for using this. How confident are we that it won't blow up in our face when somebody walks that through?
Mr. Busk.
Thank you, Mayor Ross and Councilmember Jordan. Our position is that density bonus does not apply to this program, because it's a unique program that is outside of our standard density requirements. If they want to use density bonus, then they can follow the density outlined in the general plan.
Have we voted that, or vetted that with HCD yet, that stance?
We have not.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, just to kind of go follow up on Michael Jordan's questions as well, I have the same ones in terms of, because we are considering the Dennis Bonesley program, or no, excuse me, the inclusionary program citywide, but as we saw before, council voted to change the parking designations in the CBD. We've been trying to incentivize development, both residentially and ancillary economic development in the CBD. So it does kind of make sense. Did, did we consider, I, I know that we have more inclusionary things coming up, but was there a consideration of separating the two out? In other words, having the CBD designation that was specific to adaptive reuse. What I'm thinking about isn't so much like the, kind of the monster of the Nordstrom bills, when I'm thinking about all those little, those old, long, deep retail buildings are going to be very, very expensive to convert to begin with. So if we want to incentivize the reuse of those buildings in a different way, I think we're going to have to get pretty clever here. We're going to have to listen to the, to the development community, which I know you have, but in order to get there, so I'm, I'm thinking that we, we should look at what we're trying to develop economically as well as residentially in the downtown. So my question is, was there ever any, any internal conversations in staff about that, that kind of concept, that separation? Are we looking at the... are we looking at the, the citywide as a, as a one-size-fits-all for inclusionary?
Councilmember, or Mayor Rouse, we did look at it with the different geographies in place. In fact, originally, the ordinance was not proposed citywide. That was feedback from Planning Commission and the public that this should be citywide. Initially, it was focused on the downtown for that revitalization purpose. You are correct that if there was no inclusionary, that's an additional incentive. So if you're trying to further incentivize adaptive reuse, eliminating the inclusionary requirement would absolutely go towards that. We have, initially, we had hoped that the inclusionary study would be ready in time. As that moved forward, it was taking longer to get all the data and get that study out. And this adaptive reuse ordinance was seen as kind of the quick win, let's get it done. And so we didn't want to hold this up for that study. So that was the rationale. And also, in terms of that meeting back in July, I will say Dana took very copious notes, and we had spreadsheets of all the council and planning commission's feedback on all of these topics. And it was definitely not as clear in terms of each of those things as to what the recommendation was. So I wouldn't say that there was clear direction from that. And we can show you those notes if, if that helps, but that was our takeaway.
Was there any discussion of bifurcation of size? In other words, if you had, I'll just bring up the Nordstrom building. There's a big, tall tower that wants to be reused adaptively. But clearly, if you had no inclusionary, then that could be 75, 80 units. So maybe that isn't the right thing to do for that size. But was there anything about, say, like a cap to a certain amount of units in that kind? Was that discussion had?
Mayor Rouse, we did not have that conversation internally, but as you mentioned, with the higher scale of development, there is more ability financially to absorb the impacts of an inclusionary unit. So I think that is a logical statement.
And then the discussion of maximum size, is that kind of a historical look back at what happened on the Chapala Street units and Elmo de Pla Lobo and those? I mean, I know that we don't repeat that. I also don't think they're, that they've got a financially great tech record either for what they built, which may speak to the market as much as anything.
Yeah, Mayor Rouse, we did not specifically look at that project in terms of establishing the maximum.
I know you remember it, though.
Unit size. I do remember it, yes. And that's why we also use the average, because then it does allow the developer, if, if it makes sense to have one penthouse unit, it allows them to balance that out without us being as prescriptive.
Thank you very much. All right. If there are no further questions, I will move on to public speakers. And my first speaker's slip is for Ben Romo. We have three minutes at the dais. And Madam Clerk, are there high-end resources online yet?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have five recent.
Okay, very good. Mr. Romo.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Rouse, members of council. I was doom scrolling on Instagram today, and my world was rocked when I learned that Killiam Murphy invented a new acronym. It's Romo, relief, relief of missing out. My, my one true love in life, AI, told me that Romo is the feeling of peace that arises from recognizing that you don't need to participate in every social event or consume every piece of information.
Are you taking notes?
Yeah, yeah. This is super important stuff. This is my, my three minutes. One thing I'm relieved to miss out on is the big debate about whether State Street should be open to cars. I have Romo on that issue because it's so big and complex. There's only so much that me and my little brain can, can keep track of. It's not that I don't care about State Street. I do care a lot. Revitalizing State Street is, is a big reason why my clients and I are so excited about doing adaptive reuse projects downtown. Even me and my little brain can figure out that if you put housing downtown, more local residents will be there. They'll shop there and help recreate the vibrancy and energy of downtown that made State Street such a huge draw, like when I was a kid. Housing is important everywhere, and we should build as much affordable housing as we can. Downtown, though, housing is really tough. Downtown land values are the highest. It's the most complex place to build, and it's really challenging and expensive to rework downtown's funky buildings into legally complying residential. In its present form, I fear the adaptive reuse ordinance won't work downtown. Our biggest concerns have to do with the inclusionary requirements. Requiring below-market rents in adaptive reuse projects will lead to few, if any, projects downtown. The margins are very, very thin. The financial margins are very thin on these projects, and many property owners will not accept the 90-year regulatory reporting and monitoring relationship with the government that the inclusionary ordinance imposes. We recommend removing the inclusionary requirements in the central business district, to be clear, in the central business district. Elsewhere, go for it. I'm also concerned about the maximum, the limits on maximum square footage. I was glad to hear that staff moved back up. Flexibility is key in these projects, like these are challenging buildings to make things work. So more flexibility, the better. For me, though, most importantly, larger units can serve families. We have a lack of three-bedroom units in the rental market right now. Finally, in closing, I want to share just how much we appreciate your staff. When we're considering a project, our first thing is to go to staff and engage with them as thought partners, and working with them is terrific. We can and do disagree sometimes, and we can and will continue working together. But the current draft of the ordinance makes it very difficult to do adaptive reuse downtown. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Rich Applebaum.
Mayor Rouse, members of the council, I thought about doom scrolling also, but no acronym with Applebaum would ever come up that would be useful. So I gave that up. So Clu Santa Barbara applauds your efforts to develop an adaptive reuse plan to hopefully bring residents downtown and provide badly needed housing. Converting non-residential units to housing hopefully will achieve this objective. We note that the plan relaxes many of the typical constraints that have preserved the quality of life in our city, and we think that this trade-off is worth it because it provides the housing. We note that there are no additional inclusionary requirements beyond the standard 10%, which is a trade-off, I would argue. So Clu argues and urges the city to maintain the 10% requirement, an extremely modest provision that would at least provide some workforce housing downtown. Although we don't have data on this, it's certainly speculative, we're speculating, that absent an inclusionary requirement of any sort, no moderate income housing would be built downtown, and that much of the housing would probably be built at the higher end of the scale, which often attracts non-residents, whereas we need to support the people who live and who work here. I would add, we prefer that the 10% requirement be constructed on site to ensure a mix of moderate and above moderate income residents. Once the BAE study is completed, we'll have some hard data on that, and then you can determine whether in lieu fees work or whether they don't work. And, you know, I guess I would just emphasize, we have a lot of speculation on how the inclusionary requirement would play out. That should be based on data, not speculation. I would speculate myself that adding the 10% additional inclusionary units, the cost of that, at least to the larger projects, would not break the bank for most of this. I'll conclude by noting that during the fifth RENA cycle, the market did just fine in addressing above moderate income households. The city met 84% of its RENA requirements in this category. Conversely, only four moderate units were permitted out of 820 allocated units. So the city is not doing well with this category of people or lower-income people. So again, just to repeat, we urge that you maintain the 10% requirement for moderate income households. So thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Carlos.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and council members. I'm not a funny person, so I'm not going to waste your time with a joke. Today, I am speaking to you as a housing authority commissioner who enthusiastically supports your adoption of this ordinance as written. Repurposing buildings that have already been through our thoughtful design review to create new housing makes so much sense. It's environmentally responsible and will help revitalize key parts of our city. The incentives included unlimited density, no open space, reduced parking, and expedited approval are generous, allowing structures to be modernized on the inside while preserving the beautiful architectural details on the outside that makes Santa Barbara such a special place. What doesn't make sense is eliminating our very modest inclusionary housing requirement. We're only asking for 10% affordability at the moderate income level with in lieu fees allowed for projects under nine units. A single person earning up to $100,000 is moderate income. Teachers, nurses, hospitality managers, city employees should be able to benefit from adaptive reuse housing, too. I do support reconsidering allowing in lieu fees once we have the long-awaited BAE study. However, eliminating the requirement to integrate affordable units as part of a market rate housing adaptive reuse project now and instead allowing a developer to pay fees is a big compromise. Those fees rarely cover the cost of building a unit off-site, and construction can be delayed until enough fees accumulate. More importantly, housing development should ideally be mixed income, not segregated by economic class. Developers will always argue inclusionary will stop housing construction, but in reality, it's seldom the case. When Santa Barbara adopted its ordinance in 2017, construction did not halt, it actually increased. According to data in the city's 10-year AUD evaluation, before our inclusionary policy was passed, we averaged 37 projects a year. After it was passed, we averaged 47. Today, more than 1,000 market rate AUD units are in the pipeline. Clear proof inclusionary housing has not blocked development. I urge you to hold the line locally because at the state level, new laws are shrinking or eliminating affordability requirements while deregulatory concessions for market rate development are rapidly expanding. Meanwhile, our RENA targets at the low and moderate income level have more than doubled between the fifth and sixth cycles, with no new state funding to help us meet them. Adaptive reuse is a strong step forward, providing vitality in housing while honoring Santa Barbara's past. But if we are serious about fairness in this city and helping our workforce, inclusionary or in lieu fees must remain part of the equation. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Elander.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, and community members. My name's Robin Elander, and I serve as the executive director for the Downtown Santa Barbara Improvement Association. And today, I'm speaking on behalf of our board and our housing task force. We appreciate the city's leadership in pursuing an adaptive reuse ordinance. Converting underutilized commercial buildings into housing is a critical strategy for our downtown, where spaces limited and vacancy remains a challenge. After reviewing the draft, we are generally supportive, but are opposed to applying inclusionary housing requirements to privately developed adaptive reuse projects in the central business district. These projects are already financially complex, and additional mandates will deter investment and result in potentially no housing at all. Affordable housing projects that use grants, federal funding, or philanthropic dollars are certainly needed as well, though are in another category of housing development and should be treated differently. To improve feasibility, we urge council to exempt inclusionary housing requirements in the commercial business district for adaptive reuse. Remove average unit size caps for both rental and for-sale housing, and allow additional floors outside existing shelves where appropriate. We also support preserving active ground floor commercial uses, minimizing code barriers where building envelope is maintained, and streamline regulations to prioritize housing production. Without these changes, we risk passing a well-intentioned ordinance that delivers little impact. Thank you for doing all you can to remove the barriers that stand in the way of revitalizing downtown and adding much-needed housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, online speakers, please.
We have five online speakers. I will say the names, and then we'll call the first person. The names are Linda Honigman, Stephen Johnson, Craig Minus, Cassandra Ensberg, and Anna. Linda Honigman, please go ahead.
Greetings, Mayor Rouse and city council members. I'm Linda Honigman, an affordable housing advocate, who will be sharing comments from the Strong Towns Santa Barbara letter. Thank you for the opportunity to support the proposed adaptive reuse ordinance. Strong Towns was founded with the aim of working closely with local officials to promote policies which embody best practice urban planning principles. For Santa Barbara, that means supporting policies and programs that can significantly increase our housing supply to match community needs. As we wrote in our letter in July of 2024, the housing cost increase has been so drastic that 55% of renters are cost burdened. This impacts the workers who we rely on every day for critical roles, such as teachers, nurses, custodians, clerks, contractors, and more. It is our responsibility to those residents and workers to try to increase the housing supply as much as possible. Converting existing buildings to housing and preventing hotels as a possible use appear to be low-cost ways to get supply moving in the right direction. The proposed ordinance ensures that the number of units and density can increase in our multifamily zones without decreasing future livability. We believe that having no maximum density and the reduction of parking requirements will help to incentivize these conversions. We also agree that waiving all pre-application and concept review requirements is appropriate and helpful to the housing element goals. The issue of maximum unit size was not addressed in the letter, but Strong Towns supports having a variety of unit types and being able to accommodate more than two bedrooms. We look forward to working with you, city staff, and organizations who share our goals to make Santa Barbara more resilient, fiscally sound, and people-oriented, one step and home at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Stephen Johnson. Stephen Johnson, please go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I first would observe that the proposed average unit size, 800 square feet, that's a smaller of the two proposals, is still too large. The general plan, Land Use Element, page 11, calls for a maximum average unit size of 600 square feet in a specific instance. I urge council members to get familiar with the Land Use Element, page 11, regarding the average unit size of 600 square feet. 800 square feet has produced how many moderate income market rate units in the last 40 years? Zero. In the last 45 years. Look at the statistics. Moderate income market rate units? Zero. That number should stand out, and one should ask oneself, why? It's because the average size has gotten too large. Consider, for example, the Palmetree Apartments, built back in the 60s, I believe, 40 units, 40 units of rental housing. What's the average unit size for that 40-unit project? 462 square feet. Those units are market rate, moderate income, affordable. I'll just briefly say, I'm not in favor of requiring inclusionary units in the downtown core, much as other speakers have said. And I think a study should be made of market, of inclusionary housing in general. I believe it's one item that's killed the moderate income market rate possibilities. And inclusionary housing could be better described as lottery housing. The only residents that can occupy those units have to win a lottery to get to live in those units. And what happens to those residents if they get a pay raise? Are they evicted? It's just rife with potential corruption. So I'm not real keen about inclusionary. So I'm not real keen about inclusionary housing. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Craig Minus, then it will be Cassandra Ensberg, Anna, and then Cody Sargent. Craig Minus, please go ahead.
Good afternoon. Everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Craig Minus. I'm a local land use planner, and I serve as the Executive Director for the Coastal Housing Coalition. We thank the Council for advancing the adaptive reuse effort. We'd like to commend the city staff for working with our organization through the ordinance creation. We've participated along the entire review process, including the Planning Commission and Ordinance Committee, and we submitted a public comment letter to you today. In short, the CHC advocates for workforce housing. Traditionally, those households who may not earn enough to afford the median residential purchase or rental price but make too much money to qualify for subsidized or capital A affordable housing. We are in support of adaptive reuse. We believe this provides a fantastic opportunity to locate housing in areas to support this surrounding commerce, in particular for buildings where commercial and office demand has expired. This program will help add needed housing while generally maintaining the cityscape as new housing units will occupy existing building footprints. Our strongest recommendation is for you to help this program hit the ground running. Removing barriers will do that, and we encourage you to not apply inclusionary housing to these projects at this time. Like the kickstart of AUD, perhaps there is an isolated period of time or a number of adaptive reuse units which would not include inclusionary units. This would allow these needed projects to hit the ground running. Again, like AUD, you could then revisit inclusionary at a later time, particularly after the BAE study is complete. But if financial barriers exist which inhibit adaptive reuse units, then we also don't get deed-restricted units either. Again, our submitted letter expands on this further. We thank you for your work, and the CHC remains available if you have any further questions.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Cassandra Ensberg. Please go ahead, Cassandra Ensberg.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Good afternoon to all of you, and thank you to everyone for the good work. I really appreciate it. And I am Cass Ensberg, and I support this adaptive reuse ordinance, and I only have a few additional words. I understand the different points of view, and I think they're all, everybody brings something important to the table. We obviously need a way that works for the challenges of design and construction, and a way also to generate new funding sources for affordable housing since the loss of the Redevelopment Agency. I believe that the in-lug fees might be a good way to help that, and I know there's been a lot of talk about it, so this is not anything new that I'm bringing up. I simply want to add support for consideration of allowing developers a choice to eliminate the inclusionary housing by paying into the established in-lug fee, or, you know, paying an established in-lug fee that would go into the Affordable Housing Fund at the issuance of the permit. And it seems that those numbers should be fairly easily established. I think there's a number of other communities that are already doing this successfully, so I would really, I hope that that can be something that can be seriously considered and done. I also want to acknowledge, you know, the examples of great projects that we have seen, the Sir Lutob Building, the Historic Chamber of Commerce Building, and the former Quality Inn are all inspirational examples of these principles of partnership, generosity, and creativity. And several, Mr. Romo is in the audience there, and I want to thank them for their hard work in showing that way forward. So with that, I support this ordinance and with the suggested addition as of the in-lug as an option, as a good and wise step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Anna. Go ahead.
Yes. So, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. My name is Anna R.C., and I'm the Policy Advocate for Cause, and we support the adaptive reuse proposal as currently drafted, and particularly the requirement to maintain a 10% affordability standard for moderate-income housing. Inclusionary requirements are necessary for working families and essential workers and long-term residents who are too often priced out of our city due to increasing rents. Adoption of this proposed ordinance aims at encouraging projects to convert existing buildings for residential uses. This also has a potential to increase availability of housing and provide opportunities to revitalize the Santa Barbara downtown. We also support the consideration of in-lug fees as a compromise for adaptive reuse projects with more than 10 units, provided that those fees are meaningful and directly fund affordable housing. Once needed, studies are completed to demonstrate the impact. Developers have already been given unlimited density, no open space requirements, and other regulatory concessions, which already provides an extraordinary amount of flexibility. And so this level of deregulation is a profound shift in land use policy, and without including inclusionary requirements, it risks deepening displacement and inequality and further placing us behind towards realistic plans to produce affordable units to meet our arena requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our final speaker is Cody Sargent. Cody Sargent, please go ahead.
Barely. Oh, I'll speak up. Here we go. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, city staff. My name's Cody Sargent with Brownstein Hyatt Barber Shrek. We represent Coastal Housing Coalition and submitted written public comment on their behalf, so I'll be brief. Just wanted to again thank the city for their efforts in adopting this ordinance which seeks to incentivize development of a wide range of housing and revitalize the downtown corridor. However, as was made clear by developers who submitted comment, comments made by other members of the public, imposing an inclusionary housing requirement will disincentivize housing. If a developer can convert commercial buildings to hotel use without any inclusionary requirement, what incentive do they have to instead develop housing under this program? I've heard comments today in support of inclusionary requirement, and we don't disagree that affordable housing is an important goal. We believe that many of the projects developed under this program very well could be affordable by design. However, the city has not provided any analysis showing that this requirement won't disincentivize redevelopment, and we've heard from countless developers it'll do just that. At the end of the day, while we understand the desire to have 10% affordable units, 10% of zero units is still zero. Finally, we heard from city staff concerns that adding inclusionary at a later date could violate Housing Crisis Act. This is discussed in our comment letter, but in short, this is incorrect, given the adaptive reuse ordinance was not in place in 2018, and so the concern's misplaced. We strongly urge Council to consider revisions to adopt an ordinance that'll incentivize these conversions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, that is the final speaker.
Okay, very good. Bring you back to Council. One quick question of staff first, because you keep mentioning the study that's due here in the fall. Are we putting the carpet before the horse, or talking about in-lug fees, or talking about the geographical scope of this particular ordinance? I mean, are we gonna have to revisit this anyway, once the study's done? Or what's the, I think Ms. McAdoo?
Yeah, I'm happy to talk a little bit about the inclusionary housing study. It is a comprehensive look at inclusionary housing requirements in lieu fees across the city. And so it's taking a look at sort of feasibility of inclusionary requirements, what level of inclusionary requirements should we have fees? Should we actually require units to be built? So it's a very comprehensive look at the program. I think that is why staff has been recommending that we leave the inclusionary requirement in, we can always come back and take it out at a future date. I think the city attorney's office can weigh in, but we don't believe we could add it back in if we adopt it today or have U-Direct staff to take it out. We could not add it back in at some future point. So that's the challenge, is we have not finalized that study yet, and so just that's the dilemma that we're in, and wanting to move forward with adaptive reuse with the ability to come back and revisit it once the inclusionary study is done.
Well, I think that kind of begs the question, though, we're going forward now, and those are important pieces of information that are, so rather than trying to amend the future, should this be something we do now, or should we table this?
So I think we've continued to say, go ahead and adopt it now, because we have put these deadlines in the housing element, saying we would work to finish and complete this adaptive reuse ordinance by the end of the calendar year, so we can always come back and revisit it. I think carving out the downtown and inclusionary requirement would be a relatively small change. I mean, it still would require, you know, reintroducing the ordinance with that change, but it's something that, you know, we could bring straight back to Council. We wouldn't have to go all the way through the review process again.
It would be nice to have a real definitive answer to the question the gentleman from Brownstein asked or proposed that was, I think, in opposition to what we had assumed here, that we could not make certain changes if they were established.
Mr. Mayor, and I'll have Ms. Osterer speak about this a little bit further, but we had made that recommendation that Council not make changes to the ordinance as proposed and leave the inclusionary requirements in until the inclusionary study, as Ms. McAdoo refers to, is completed. There's some concern that if it was taken out, adding it back, because it would have a chilling effect, adding it back would have a chilling effect on housing production, that it would violate the Housing Crisis Act. But it's, we have to say, it's not clear, and that may not be an issue. But we wanted to raise it and flag it for Council, just so that they're aware that there's some possibility that that could be a problem.
Don't add anything, Ms. Osterer?
Mayor Rouse, that's accurate. It was more of a, just to make you aware, I didn't want to come back and tell you that you could add it back in, and then state law changes again, and then we can't, so.
All right. All right, very good. Well, with that, I'll bring you back to Council, and Ms. Nen, you've got your light on.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I'll reiterate mostly my comments from Ordinance Committee, just being really excited that this has come forward, and thank you to the incredible work by staff. I think maybe eight years ago, Council Friedman, when you and I were running the first time, this was like, we talked about it constantly, adaptive reuse. And I remember maybe eight years ago, a conversation with Cass Ensberg about the importance of adaptive reuse, and, you know, all that time ago, when we had, you know, vacuous vacancies on State Street, and saying, oh, if only those could be adaptively reused. And so the reason I bring that up is because this is a long time coming, and we've been talking about adaptive reuse since long before we even had an inclusionary ordinance, years before, actually. So, you know, we can toggle these back and forth, but the idea of waiting for one to be able to do the other, I believe there are projects that would be good to go, that might have one unit, two units, that could just, we could at least get it going. So I think having the scaffolding of the really well-done ordinance in place is really important. And then, once we have this comprehensive study, which has also taken years, because it's important, careful work. I mean, this came up in our discussion when we first brought up inclusionary, when we talked about FARs. At different times, this inclusionary number and lue fee, and then a long time coming to be able to have our local housing trust fund established. So all these scaffolding pieces in place, I don't believe are going to come all in one day in one meeting, and what we can do to put these things in place along the way, I think, is really valuable. So this ordinance is critical for housing, but it's also, I think, maybe almost more importantly, it's critical for being able to reconfigure, repurpose, reuse those spaces downtown for more modern adapted uses, for how we use spaces now. I mean, so much has happened in these times. We have been online retail. We had COVID times, introducing people to working at home and working in hybrid flex ways. And so this is really a new era, and the quicker we can get to reusing and reconfiguring those spaces, the better. There's so many examples of spaces that are just too long or too vacuous, so we need to get those going so they can be reconfigured internally. The ordinance also maintains the historic facades, which is really important. We're just talking about reconfiguring the insides and promote sustainability through reuse, and that's also been called for for a long time. I love how this has expanded beyond the downtown core, and particularly in the upper state area. There are so many underutilized hotel spaces that could be better, higher purpose for housing, and this would make that easier to happen. So we can talk about different incentives for spaces to turn into hotels, but there's also incentive here for underutilized hotels to be able to be converted into housing pretty easily. There are so many incentives in this that we're, it's a good sign that we're just focusing on the inclusionary, because all those other incentives were good enough that I think we're not hearing from developers that there's anything wrong with those incentives. So I see that as a real positive. It really stuck out to me in public comments that, you know, 10% inclusionary is so small. I mean, we sort of grappled over that number when we were talking about inclusionary in the first place, and a lot of us, myself included, didn't think 10% was enough. So this is 10%. If it's a certain number of units, I'm not so much worried about that, but there is also the avenue, when this holistic, comprehensive study comes back, that we can look at it. So I'm appreciating that. I do like the revised language, the revised the maximum average unit sizes to 1,200 square feet for rental units and 2,000 square feet for ownership units, as staff's original recommendation and to Councilmember Jordan's points. And aside from that revision, I would be very happy to support the ordinance and the staff recommendation as it was put forward. So, thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. I have a couple of follow-up questions for staff before I get into my comments. The first is, if the inclusionary study, when it comes back, says that inclusionary basically isn't really economically feasible anywhere in the city where this would be allowed, would it be more difficult to focus the discussion on whether to remove inclusionary in the Central Business District versus opening it up to the entire city, where this would apply?
That's, I mean, that's obviously a policy discussion for the Council. It just depends on, I mean, I think, obviously, if it's not economically feasible anywhere in the city, that's a pretty significant challenge that we would need to have a larger discussion about. But, you know, the Council could make a choice to specifically identify certain geographic areas where you would like to encourage adaptive reuse, and in those cases, take out the inclusionary requirement.
Okay, so it's something that could potentially happen if we go down. Okay. And then just two kind of more technical questions. If we were to, today, there was a majority that wanted to go forward with removing inclusionary, would it be possible to, instead of just blanket removal, put a cap on the units? So say, under, say, 25 units. If a project is under 25 units, no inclusionary, but if it's over, then it would still have the inclusionary, so that the larger projects, which can absorb those types of costs, would still be covered under the inclusionary?
Councilmember Friedman through the Mary. Yes, we could do that. I couldn't, we couldn't do it on the fly, but we could come back with something.
And then the same type of question, would we be able to put a sunset date on it to see if it actually would work to do that, say, five years or coinciding with the housing element?
We generally don't recommend sunset dates, because to change zoning ordinances, it requires a hearing, so we have to carefully consider how we schedule so we can remove the sunset date. But I will say that the annual progress report that we do will be counting the units that are coming through. are coming through, so I think that might alleviate your concern.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Those are the questions I have. Now I'll go to comments. First, I just want to thank staff for finally delivering, delivering this. I agree a lot with what Councilmember Stedden was saying about, we've been on here for, she and I have been here almost eight years and it was discussed back then and had different iterations and it's finally getting close to being here and it's much needed now more than ever when we look at the situation in downtown, in particular in Central Business District, but also just in general throughout the city. When we're talking about the Central Business District, there are, and Councilmember Jordan referred to this, there are multiple community priorities and goals in Central Business District. One is, is housing, but the other is, is also downtown revitalization and economic development, economic sustainability by having individuals being able to live in downtown. So this project is as much, if not more, an economic issue as well as a housing issue. And it's great when, when both line up, line up together, but sometimes they don't quite line up and so we have to make a policy discussion or decision up here when sometimes goals might not line up either in terms of timing or they might be somewhat conflicting. And so for me, well, I understand the decision to keep inclusionary. There is a trade-off when it comes to getting units actually built. I think there is a compelling case that's been made by, I mean, Mr. Romo spoke on behalf of individuals who have been able to build housing, but those were unique projects. And just in general, it's very difficult. I know Peter Lewis has commented on what it took to get his Soltar project built with the city processes and nobody's saying that's a bad project. Pretty much everyone says that's a good project. And again, it gets into city processes, excessive bureaucracy that led to that project taking longer and added costs. Some of the things that I have just trepidation with, with the way, with the current proposal is that hotels do not, if, if they went for hotels, the traditional process, there's, hotels can bring in higher revenue for the project owners or the property owners and there isn't the restriction, the restrictions that come with inclusionary on there. And so it becomes an economic issue and I don't want to inadvertently drive property owners to building more hotels. And I think that could be a very real possibility unless we, we, we get this right and we can always modify it, but the last thing I think we want to do is reduce the ability to get more housing built and instead get hotels. Property owners are, they've contacted us and when you, again, when you put in the option for a hotel, which would still be there, having a 90-year contract with the government for one or two units, that would give them hesitation. It just would. It's just a reality. Any, anybody who owns a property would take that into consideration on whether or not to put in a project, especially if you're talking one or two units on there. That's a long time. It goes, successive generations of their family would have that. It's just something that we all have to think about before we vote today on whether or not that would prevent them from, from doing it or not. And then also, do we or do we not, when we have the inclusionary at 10, at 10, you get your first unit, would we be missing out on housing units downtown because they would stop at nine? Just like they might stop at four because there's no in lieu fee or five. And that's just, that's going to be more information coming back in the study. And I do wish we would have been able to get the study done, but I understand the timing from the housing element right now. Our goal is to get this done and we can, you know, come back with the in lieu, in lieu and inclusionary study later. But at the same time, the goal is we need to get housing built downtown for the economic sustainability and vitality of downtown. Another issue that has come up is, in some cases, the affordables could have been offset with vouchers in some type of way, but with limited federal funding, that option is dwindling where that could have made up some of the difference on the economics for these projects, for the inclusionary aspect of it, if they were to have vouchers. And now they may not be able to. So that also affects the bottom line. And then in just conversations I've had, we've had correspondence sent to all of us. Right now, the risk is very high for project development when alternatively, you can park your money with zero risk and get about a 5% or more return with zero risk. Just park it and see what thing, what happens in that market where you're just sitting it there, it's not doing anything, but you're getting a 5% return. And then to enter into this and you might get a six or a seven or an 8% return, that's a lot of risk when you're talking millions or tens of millions of dollars for what really amounts to an additional one or two or 3%. They're not getting 10% returns. And if they are, it's still, you got to take out that first 5%. So again, the economics are very tough right now and we would inadvertently, in my opinion, be pushing people towards hotels and I, and it's just not something I want to do. So when we look at Paseo Nuevo on the economics that we had, we're contributing the land and potentially additional funding through property tax intervention and it still comes out, it was a public hearing just a couple of weeks ago and it was still in the, in the vicinity of six, six to 7% return. And that's with us donating the land, that's with us offsetting it with some of the costs. So those are some of the things that I really look at it and again, it's how, how quickly do we want to revitalize downtown and get that economic base that lives down there and supports it? So I, I would want to see where my colleagues are, but I would be open to the staff recommendations, but with the following modifications would be to remove the inclusionary for projects under a certain number. It could be 25, it could be 50. Staff, guys, staff would come back with a number on that. I wouldn't want to go too high, but one, I think is important for the larger projects that could absorb it. So that, that's the gist of it. And then I do support going back to the staff recommendation of the, the 1,200 square foot average max. And yeah, so that's where I would be if any of my colleagues are open to that. So we'll see.
Thank you. Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start with, just to return to the question around timing with regard to the study. So I understand it's forthcoming and it's a big, massive conversation for sure, but I also heard that it's coming in the fall, which is right now. So I'm, I'm, I'm not quite following, like I hear that we need to have this done by the end of the year, but if the study is coming in the fall, as was said a couple times, we are in the fall, which gives us a couple of months to have that information and do this. And I say all that because I really don't, I, I frankly find it a very uncomfortable place to be told, like legislate something with the intent of coming back and changing it. Like I don't, that's really not, to me, good governance. It scares me, to be frank. So can we speak to, why aren't we just, if it's coming in the fall, why aren't we just waiting?
I don't think the discussion is going to be that easy. So I think it's, it's going to be a more complicated discussion about the inclusionary housing ordinance. So I think that's the challenge and, and while there may be an initial conversation, I'm not sure it's going to be crystal clear what to do. And so that's where, at least if it's in here, it gives the council, I don't think one meeting is going to answer the question with the inclusionary housing study. I don't think it's going to be that, that clear in terms of policy direction.
Okay. Thank you. And then a follow-up, I guess, sort of semi-relatedly, and maybe this is to disconnect. I think you guys articulated this, but I apologize, I missed it. I understand we have a self-imposed timeline of December on this. And by the way, I want this to move forward too. I'm just trying to understand, like, what are the actual implications here? Were we to not meet that end-of-year deadline, what are the consequences? Was the answer that we don't know the consequences? I'm sorry, I don't, I missed that.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Harmon. So we indicated in the housing element that we would have a, a draft of the adaptive reuse ordinance drafted and brought to council. We did not commit to having it adopted by the end of the year, just that staff would do the work to, to get it ready to present to council. If, if, so, so really that is, you know, there's no firm deadline that it be adopted by the end of the year. You know, as long as we're working on it, we're making progress, as has been said, you know, that, that may be sufficient. Now, of course, if we, if we fail to meet our housing element objectives and commitments, then HCD could send us a letter saying, we think you're out of compliance with your housing element. You have, I think it's 30 days to send us your comments on that as to why you don't think you're out of compliance. Ultimately, it would be up to HCD to determine, do they want to decertify our housing element? If that happened, we'd be subject to builder's remedy projects coming in, to court actions where we could have our permitting responsibilities taken away. So, you know, the ramifications would be quite serious if HCD found, determined to decertify or that we were out of compliance. But, you know, that's not going to just happen at the end of the year.
And in part because, to your initial point, circling back, we didn't commit to pass it. We committed to meaningfully moving it forward.
Moving it forward, yes.
So, okay. Which I think we clearly are, are doing and have done today. Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. I just, I'm, I'm going to get into my comments, but I have to start. I'm so grateful for all the work that has gone into this, to getting it here. I truly am and I realize my comments maybe are going to make it seem otherwise, but I, I believe in this deeply and I know you all do too. I know that many people who have engaged on this share that same commitment to moving it forward. But as I sit up here, I, I find it incredibly challenging to make decisions without access to all the information. We have to do that a lot. Like it's not totally uncommon that we have to make decisions without having 100% of the information, but it's doubly frustrating to me to know that that information is forthcoming. Whether it takes four meetings to go through it, whether it takes two meetings to go through it, it's like just out of reach for me to have a real data-driven set of analyses that can govern my decision today. And so I, I just, like, I have to preface my comments by saying, I don't think that there's, there's no blame. It is what it is, but I think it makes this discussion really challenging. And I think my own perspective is one that, as I will describe, is, is kind of a hard one for me to take emotionally and would be made much easier if I had that data in front of me. And now, you know, I'm going off of ANIC data, I'm going off of what I perceive to be communications from those that are involved in the, in sort of the work of reuse. But it, it feels amorphous to me and to legislate in that way is, is just, sort of goes against a lot of, of what I, how I would prefer to act. That said, I know maybe we would all prefer a different timeline and it is what it is. So I'm going to make my comments and we'll just go from there. Despite everything that I just said, I am really, really happy that this is moving forward and incredibly grateful that we're putting an ordinance like this in place. As was already said by both of my colleagues, there's so many benefits of this kind of an ordinance, from the environmental to the protection of our community character without sacrificing opportunities for growth and evolution. And as is particularly important in the CBD and the State Street Corps, it's one of the few, and I think really one of the key levers that the city has as it, at its disposal to really help usher in a revitalized and economically healthy downtown. So to that end, knowing that I support the ordinance generally, I do want to talk specifically about the CBD. I agree with Councilmember Jordan that we need to revise the inclusionary requirement in this area, which is a position that I also took at the PC hearing last year. So it's challenging. I don't think that my position comes as a prize to anyone, though. In the CBD specifically, to me, this ordinance is less about housing and more about facilitating the reuse of existing vacant spaces in a way that orients owners away from the easy, highly profitable hotel uses, uses that are allowed, as was indicated by staff, and orients them toward development of housing units to bring permanent residents to the CBD as a core part of our economic revitalization strategy. It was said over and over, residents who shop, eat and recreate where they live will be a critical component of our downtown revitalization strategy. In the downtown, we do have on our hands some real complexity. We've got some of the most expensive, if not the most expensive, land to develop, coupled with some of the most challenging existing building envelopes we have in the city. We've heard it once, we've heard it a million times. They're long, they're narrow, they're difficult to adapt. It's why we have so many vacancies on State Street as it is. At the same time, I think it's fair to say that as a city, we do have a real, meaningful collective desire for commercial renewal downtown, for revitalization on our State Street Corps. Policymaking, and I think housing policy in particular, is not one size fits all, all the time. And I sit up here and I, I just feel very acutely that it's my job today to grapple with nuance and to try to hold a lot of different things at once when we make this decision. In the case of adaptive reuse in the CBD, I think it's incumbent on us to consider the multifaceted goals of this ordinance. It is the production of units, yes, but more fundamentally, it's about the reuse of empty vacant spaces. It's about paving the way for that reuse downtown in spite of the complexity that exists there in our CBD. So in light of that, to me, speaking specifically and only about the CBD, I really think we have an obligation to be as encouraging as we possibly can for this type of reuse. And to me, that means removing all the constraints that we can downtown, including the inclusionary requirement for projects of 25 units, whatever that number is, or more, and maintaining it elsewhere in the city. And I want to say, I think it's important, and I'm particularly looking at the advocates here, that I did not back last July when I first articulated this position and I certainly don't today, I don't take it lightly at all. The inclusionary requirement is something that I am deeply committed to and that I believe is an incredibly important mechanism for building, literally building, a city that works for all of us. But in this hyper-specific, hyper-limited way for adaptive reuse projects only in the CBD, I really believe that we can't miss the forest for the trees. There is an opportunity for us to do it all. And I think that removing this requirement only and specifically in the CBD gets us closer to doing everything that we collectively believe is important and necessary for the city of Santa Barbara. So with all of that, I will just close by saying my preference here, similar to Councilmember Friedman, is to remove the inclusionary for projects under a certain size, 25 sounds good to me, in the CBD only, retaining it outside of the CBD, and also to return to the earlier staff recommendation on average unit size. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'll just build a little bit upon what you've heard already, but I definitely appreciate the work and want it to move forward, but I think there's more work to be done. I don't want to have to tell you that the most significant challenge to develop in this city, particularly in the dark blue areas on this map, the downtown corridor, Upper State Street and Milpas, is the cost of the land. It's the most expensive in the city. It's the biggest burden to start a project of anywhere in this city. And the next one is, or are, the city barriers or burdens or challenges or pros- And the next one is, or are, the city barriers or burdens or challenges or process. We hear this, we hear this all the time, and they, again, in some of those dark blue areas, are exponentially tougher than they are in the light blue areas, because they're in a historic landmarks designation, historic district. And that's, when you're talking about housing right now, it's no wonder that the du jour process, even though doesn't look like it's going to let up, is the bonus density option. That is the one that everybody picks right now. There's more allowances, and there's less burdens on the development. And as long as that continues, and that gap is there between the offer of that and what we offer, that's what the developer's going to choose. And we know even, what, whatever you say your, your prime goal is for your housing, a bonus density project by nature delivers less affordable housing than the city's inclusionary housing. They get that, they, they just work those numbers and, and they get it. I also think, you know, historically, we generally do this poorly. We do it like a city, we do it like a bureaucracy. We, we recognize the problem too late, we're already years behind on this issue in the downtown corridor, and in other spots of the city where commercial square footage and office square footage has just fallen off the map. We take too long to develop our method, and then frequently, sitting in this chair for 15 years, we present it with a timeline that was unknown up until that time. You know, today's the first time I've heard that there's a December or January issue on, on having something accomplished. And then, you know, frankly, we construct a process that I think is backwards. It should, it should start at what the goal is, driving more housing, and move backwards, rather than start at what our existing processes are, and try and move those to the goal. Something needs to change, that just historically doesn't work well when we do it that way. I think, thank you a couple of you for jumping on what my initial impression was of this, too. This is an economic ordinance that includes housing. This is not a housing ordinance that includes economics, particularly in terms of the downtown corridor. We are sitting right now on a, certainly generational, in my, maybe a lifetime, in my issue, with what's happened out there in terms of retail, commercial use, and office space, and the need to find something to remedy that. That calls for quick, decisive action. Doesn't even have to be the best thing you can do quickly. It, it needs quick action, though, to start to, to, to stop the bleeding and start to rebuild. So I don't think the answer to that is pass something, move something forward as, as, as proposed today, when you still want to come back sometime in the future and wait for something to address what you're passing today. I, I think it just speaks to me that regardless of the data you're waiting for, it will still show, in the dark blue places specifically, but downtown immediately, that the high cost of land, the historic basis of the district, and the building-to-building, lot lines to lot lines up against each other, protect, project such a challenge to adaptive reuse, that the normal burdens of everything else, we talk about stormwater management, inclusionary housing, open yard space, some of which are addressed as an allowance here, some which aren't, are just going to kill any available project development. And we, if, if nothing else, we should flip it and recognize that now, and make an adjustment when you bring these studies that we're waiting for. You could say that, we could do that just as easily as the opposite of what you're, as, which you're offering now, is to adopt this now, and then wait and look at those studies then. So I am intrigued, and have obviously heard about some of these options, but I'm willing to direct staff to come back with an option that removes the downtown corridor, however you want to define it, central business district or whatever, from an inclusionary requirement. Graciously accept staff's willingness to move the maximum square footage numbers back up, and figure out what this would apply to, how many units at one time, 25, 50, whatever that would be. And I think that will, you will quickly see what the market can do with that. My fear is that putting this forward is really just the equivalent of saying, let's do all these allowances for low-income housing and support low-income housing, but it can't be higher than two stories. It's the same thing. You're just, you're just, you're just adopting a statement, an aspiration, but the metrics can't be met, and we move on. I've heard more than one pathway of the study, and it's clear to me now that the study, we're in fall, and the study's not here yet, it will, it would be an ordinance revision, it would have to go back to planning commission, somebody will get their hands on it before that time and say, oh, we better go to stakeholders, too. It would take another year to talk about the results of that study and work on an ordinance again, and we would look at another year. The only projects that happen are the equivalent of what we're calling unicorns that could be done, and, and right now with the existing buildings. And I don't think we have a year to wait. Again, I think, I think we're late already to this, to this effort, and we need, we need to move decisively and take our head away from this being a housing ordinance, and approach it as an economic vitality ordinance in the downtown corridor, and get working on downtown. So that'll be my stance.
Ms. Nedden.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. Just as a follow-up, since I can see the direction this might be heading, I would rather wait for the INLU study than to pass it today and give up on inclusionary, because we won't be able to bring it back. And, you know, I think we're, in many ways, picturing these small adaptive spaces that we want to be nimble and, and be able to incentivize, but this would also have repercussions for the Macy's building, for the Nordstrom building. I'd like to remind us that there are some very large spaces that are in negotiation. These are not set deals, these are not done, and these would have repercussions on that. I'm also very concerned that we're using the spectacular Yarde project as the example, because while it is a fantastic example, that was for, I believe, 100% affordable housing, that's a different pencil than the pencil that's going to be used to, to price out something that can be turned into a penthouse in downtown Santa Barbara, which frankly, could sell for millions of dollars, a single penthouse. And so I, I don't really want to leave on the table what kind of INLU fees we might be able to accrue on something like that, even if it is one unit, if it's a, you know, $10 million penthouse unit in, in downtown Santa Barbara, I don't want to leave on the table those INLU fees that we might be able to collect for our local housing trust fund. So if, if, if that's what it, what it takes, that we're, we're waiting to hear back about the INLU study, then I would rather we wait for that than give up on it today, because it could have some very, very large repercussions, not for those tiny micro units, not for affordable units, but for some potentially very, very high-end market rate units that could be in play.
Ms. San Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. I want to echo what Councilmembers Nedden just mentioned. I, I too would much rather not lose the inclusionary housing requirement. It feels like we are shooting ourselves in the foot if we decide to remove that and then later cannot add it back. We are talking a lot about the revitalization of our central business district, and how this is an ordinance for economic revitalization, but I think it's important to note, this is something that we are trying to do to comply with our housing element. It will ideally, and hopefully will, help stimulate our downtown, but in my view, this, that, that is not the, the main purpose, because this is an ordinance for the entire city. The entire city is being affected, not just the CBD. And, you know, we talk a lot about imagining people living in the downtown, and shopping, and eating there, and spending money, but if we are removing the inclusionary housing requirements from those projects, what we are going to end up with is market rate units that will do what the other market rate units have done for arena numbers, which is to say, nothing. We are far behind in our low and moderate income units, and, you know, giving our, you know, local developers the ability to say, no, you don't have to include any of those, we will essentially economically segregate our workforce out of the downtown, and/or attract only out-of-town, wealthier tenants, and/or rent-burdened tenants who can barely afford the rent, and can't, don't have the economic means to shop and eat and do everything that we were hoping they could do. So I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to make the central business district be a high-income place only. That, that's not what our city is. Whether we like it or not, we have people who are lower income, who keep the city running, and who also deserve to live in that central core. And I've personally been meeting with local property owners who have commercial buildings, who want to convert them to residential units, and I will tell you right now that they are directly telling me the issue isn't even the inclusionary housing requirement, it's the millions of hoops that they have to jump through in the process, and all of the other, you know, triggers that, that happen once they're trying to convert from commercial to residential. And so if, you know, I, I want to really encourage everyone here to, to really speak directly to these developers who, who have properties ready to develop, who want to be part of a meaningful solution to our housing crisis, because again, this is going to ideally help revitalize our downtown, but that is not the main goal here. It is a citywide policy, and while I am looking at the timeline that we have, you know, we have until December 2025, it makes me a little nervous to wait, because I want to make sure that we are not out of compliance with our housing element, but if waiting means we don't give up on the inclusionary housing requirement right now, I do think it's worth waiting, because adding it back in will be a nightmare, and I think anyone that says, it'll be easier to add back in, like, that, that's just not going to happen. So I don't want to take that risk. We need to make sure, you know, we need to keep our eye on the prize, which is housing our workforce, meeting our arena numbers, and making sure that we are not out of compliance with our housing element. So I, I will say, though, for, for the rest of the items on, in, in this ordinance, because thank you to our staff, is such a comprehensive and, and really detailed-out ordinance, I, some of the feedback that I have received is, you know, the, the additional flexibilities for developers, for example, you know, the, the increase in the unit size, and all these other things, like, these are, these are more of the points that we need to be drilling on, and the idea is to promote the flexibility, but not necessarily make it so folks don't have to develop these, you know, more moderate or low-income units. So I think if we, as a council, are not ready to move forward with the discussion without the INLU fees, my question for that, I guess, would be for staff on, like, what, what does that look like? If we vote, you know, as a council, we say, we're not ready to decide this today, when would we ballpark expect to, to hear this back?
I don't have a date for you right now. I mean, I think it, we've got some, still some work to do on the draft inclusionary housing report, and then figuring out a date to bring that back to council, so I, I can't give you, I, I don't know that there's a firm date right now.
Yeah, that makes complete sense. That, that is the part that worries me, is that I, I wouldn't want to throw this out into the abyss and say, okay, well, we don't know when it's going to come back. But I, I'm not, I'm not ready to give up the inclusionary housing requirement, I will, I will say that much. We do need to keep, however, the flexibility for developers. Again, there are buildings that are ready to be converted if we were to just make it easier, so. I will turn it back over to our mayor. Thank you, Mayor Ross.
Mr. Jordan.
For some reason, I thought that what was being presented today needed five votes. Is that true?
Ms., Councilmember Jordan, so to introduce an ordinance requires four votes, votes. To adopt it requires a supermajority of five.
Okay, so, and nothing would be passed today, despite a comment, because nothing could be reworked on the fly today to be passed. It's not on the agenda, and that type of thing. And the large projects that were mentioned are pursuing on their own. They're not pursuing a, a hopeful adaptive reuse thing, Nordstrom's or anything at Paseo Nuevo, those are, they're already into the city on a, on a project basis on their own, not according to this ordinance. So four people today, though, could direct staff to come back with a list of revisions to the ordinance. That would be true?
That, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. So having heard all this, and, and I think I'll go back to my original thing about the timeline and the study and whatnot, I think the solution to this, if we wanted to move something forward, would be in fact, segregate out the CBD, and have the inclusionary go as written to the rest of the city, because of what Mr. Jordan brought up a few times, this is in fact, an economic development opportunity. We have probably a de minimis impact downtown anyway. I don't even know if we have an inventory, but we have zones. Do we actually have an inventory of eligible buildings that were, that are, that are either possibly looking at something like, or could possibly looking at this? And I don't know that we have that.
Mayor Ross, we, we did look at data we have on existing land uses, so sites that are currently used for commercial versus retail versus office. We did look at that information in preparation of the joint hearing last year, to bring it to you all, to see how many sites could potentially be eligible as an existing non-residential building that could have residential in it. Just to get us a, a big number, I don't know that off the top of my head, it was done a year ago, but it was a significant quantity when at that time we were focusing on the central business district as the geographic area for this. There's very few structures that are purely residential use structures here, so there's significant.
A lot of them just don't really, I mean, they're, they're going to make, it's, it's hard to from them pencil out. Any contractor that was in here today would tell you that it's probably more economically viable to scrape and build from new than it is to go in and hollow out an old building, especially the older ones downtown, that were interested in preserving the architecture and the feel and scene reused as residential. These are actually very special cases, there, it's hard to do this as a blanket ordinance, frankly. But we all want workforce housing, we want as much affordability as possible. We can want it all day long, and we can have the hubris of sitting up here and trying to create that from the dais, and we create nothing but another, you know, pencil paper. So I think for us to move forward to revitalizing the downtown, I do think we should explore segregating out the CBD, because what we have on this map are the, the zones, but what we really have as a target of revitalizing the downtown, housing would really serve us to, to revitalize downtown. We need to consider what it does take to go through this. There are no parking requirements in the downtown anyway, the, the commercial buildings that are paying, the PBI will not be paying the PBI as residential. And I realize we're cutting some brakes on people right now, however, if we do consider the, the INLU, not the INLU, but the, the inclusionary, and we can't really talk about INLU until they get the study back, right? So we really have put the cart before the horse here, and it's really unfortunate. So I think the way to solve this is either to defer on table, or, or even do as Mr. Jordan said, you know, give staff some recommendations to come back with, or to segregate out the CBD, which I'm in favor of in any case, because those are the ones where we have the architectural savable buildings, and, you know, the north side doesn't have a bunch of that, we do. And this is exactly what I think we should be thinking about, is trying to repurpose those old retail buildings that no longer work for retail, but would be great to have people live in them, and could you do it viably and financially for affordable? I don't think you probably could, I don't think anybody'd say you could. We should be looking at that now, and moving forward the rest of the entire program, so that's what I'd be in favor. Ms. Harmon, do you have a follow-up on that?
I do, thank you. I just want to maybe clarify slightly and, and try to get to some consensus ideally. So first...
So first, on the, my thought process to clarify for colleagues with regard to not having the inclusionary apply, it would, so what I would ask that staff would come back with would be that it would obviously only be in the CBD. It would still apply outside of that. And to the point about these larger projects, I think that's why a couple of us had talked about a cap. So to the extent, you know, there's two or three I think we're all thinking of, Ray, if that comes back with 26 units, inclusionary would apply. So I thought 25, but I mean, I leave it to staff to suggest that number to us, but some way that we, I'm trying to have the best of all worlds, is what I'm trying to do, honestly. So we still sort of maintain our leverage, to put it very baldly, I guess, in those larger projects and to facilitate the development of the smaller projects. So that would be my suggestion. And then one brief follow-up question with regard to in-lu fees. We're saying that we shouldn't discuss them because we don't have that nexus sort of to actual costs, but if the study comes back, or when the study comes back and gives us that number, we can apply them then? I'm a little bit confused. So if we don't have a number today, would we, could we put in a placeholder or say a dollar? That way we can up that fee? I'm confused about how in-lu versus inclusionary works.
It would be the current require, the current requirements for inclusionary.
Okay.
So that's what the ordinance is, my understanding.
Yes, Councilmember Harmon, our current requirement is $25 per square foot, and so there is an existing in-lu fee that could be used.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll leave it there. I think the key for me is to set some number where the larger projects would trigger the inclusionary requirement in the CBD.
Okay, very good. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I'm on the same page with Councilmember Harmon in my comments earlier. The removal of inclusionary was only related to the Central Business District, not the rest of the town, for these purposes, and then the rest can wait till the study. And then the cap is, was the exact reason that I had talked with staff and brought that up. As part of my questions as well was specifically for those larger projects, so those projects would still apply to the inclusionary and the in-lu. So that's where I'm at.
All right, very good. Mr. Jordan?
So we're just opining, looking for consensus. I think the 25 number is a good number. I, just for right or wrong, I just kind of agree that a project larger than that has a responsibility to play in the social fabric, and the other, the ones that are smaller than that, we need to ensure that they can contribute to the economic revitalization. And that's a, that's a great, in my mind, that's a great trade-off on where it still applies and where we offer an additional carrot to get moving forward.
Ms. Santa Maria?
Brief question, follow-up to that, is if a developer is building 25 units at a time, and we're talking about that cap, right, what if it's at a time and then after, like, does it count if, like, can they do 25 at a time and then do another 25 later and eventually make this?
No, because they would come in for an entitlement for the entire project, even if they were phasing it over time. So that's my understanding, is it's based on the total number of units, not at a time.
I see. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, very good. Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you. I actually find that I can be supportive of something like a cap, and I'm just interested that maybe come back with some analysis by staff on what that cap might be and how many projects that might apply to.
I would also suggest, sort of, I'll ask some of the comments earlier, is maybe we reach out to some of the developers that have provided comments and maybe ask for input on what that cap could look like and what makes, what the sort of market recommendations would be around that.
Yeah. And I guess, too, as additional for a question on that is, so since we're going by units, there would be a potential for two penthouse suites and then 16 smaller units, and you'd still be under this 20 cap. So I guess I'm sort of considering that direction, but I really think part of that would be an analysis of how many of those, I mean, thinking of several buildings, actually, that could, you could have several penthouses for, you know, $10 million and then still be underneath this cap. So I would, I would just ask that that could be also part of the analysis of that.
Well, it kind of seems like we've run out of more questions than we have answers on this. So I'm going to ask for some advice from the administration in terms of what we want to do, either about a motion or direction, or a motion to give direction, or what would be the most, because it doesn't sound like we're ready to create the ordinance right here on the fly.
Yeah, I think there's direction to come back with, at least what I have heard, a revised ordinance for introduction that would look at removing the inclusionary requirements in the downtown business district only with a unit cap, so a project unit cap, and we would explore what that could be.
Because that speaks to Mr. Jordan's point about it being a de facto economic program with the housing included, and I think that's actually correct for the downtown, but certainly not citywide.
Yeah. And I'm looking at everyone, is that what everyone else heard, too?
The only thing I would add is you would also include in that direction that staff, that the staff recommendation on the maximum unit size be included as well.
I think so. I think everybody up here is nodding here, is it, Jeff? So, all righty. Do we, Ms. Sneddon, is your light on, or is it, no?
Mayor, if you, do you guys, I mean, does the council want to make a motion to that effect, to direct staff, or, I mean?
I'm going to leave that to the parliamentarian. Was that what you'd prefer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest a motion to that effect because, you know, bear in mind, we will bring back an ordinance for introduction, which can be approved by four votes, but when we bring that back for adoption, we would need a supermajority of five votes. So it would be, it would be helpful if council moved that forward, that recommendation for staff to return with a motion.
Mr. Freeman's motion, fingers hovering.
Yep, I'll move it based on the comments to bring it, bring back the first draft of the ordinance, and that would include removing the Central Business District from the inclusionary information on a cap and what that number would be, and then replace the planning commission recommendation with a staff recommendation for the maximum average unit size.
Okay, that's the motion to be, I think that was.
Yeah, could I just ask one clarifying question? So personally, I don't, I don't want just information on the cap. I would like the cap to be written into the ordinance that's presented to us. So I want to be clear that that's...
Thanks for the cap, yeah.
Yeah, I think we would, we would make a recommendation on what the unit cap is.
Right.
Recommendation, not information.
I'll second.
Okay, so first by Freeman, second by Jordan. Question for staff, does that give you enough to go on? Oh, Ms. Sneddon has a follow-up question on, to the motion?
I do, thank you. So I think it's just something that city attorney, Ms. Connect, you said that when it would come back, it would be for introduction?
Yes, it would come back for introduction because we can't introduce this ordinance today because there's too many revisions we need to make.
Right.
So we need to make the revisions, bring back a different version of this for introduction, which requires only a majority of council. Then the second reading would be adoption, which would require five affirmative votes to pass.
Thank you. And then if I'm uncertain about the cap without the information, just in the same way we were uncertain about in-lu fees without the information, would a vote of yes today for me, would that be indicating that I would be ready to introduce the ordinance if it had those?
Councilmember Sneddon, I think that the suggestion is that staff go back and examine what a cap would look like and then bring back a recommendation on that.
Okay.
If you're uncomfortable with that ordinance as presented for introduction at that time because of the number, you would vote against it.
Okay, so a yes vote is to, yes, please go analyze that and bring that back.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Besk?
Thank you, through the mayor. I have one question because I think we've all been talking, or you've been talking, thinking mostly about rental units, but I just wanted to confirm if the direction is the same, whether it's a rental unit or a condominium.
Ms. Sneddon, you want to talk to that?
I do. Honestly, I think we have an inclusionary ordinance. We have these numbers worked out. We have a study coming forward that is going to relook at those inclusionary versus in-lu fees. I think writing all of these numbers into this ordinance complicates things because instead of just having an ordinance that uses existing inclusionary language, which is what we could pass today, an ordinance using existing inclusionary language, then when we come back and look at the inclusionary, we could adjust for all the different zones, all the different types of uses, all the different conversions and so on, as one comprehensive look. We could pass this today as a standalone adaptive reuse without writing in the numbers of the cap or writing in the amounts that are different or might apply. And I think because I still prefer that option of just let us pass this ordinance and talk deeply about inclusionary and incentives and all of that as a comprehensive package, I think even though I support the idea of looking at a cap and examining it, I think I won't support this today because I still prefer that all those numbers and caps and things not be written into the ordinance, but be its own inclusionary fee study.
Mr. Jordan? To the question, it was like a question with very little info with the question. Philosophically, I think the biggest bang for the buck is rental housing, but at the same time, we, like, suffer from a production of small or for-sale housing. And I guess, I guess my perfect answer would be come back and explain that more when you come back, but I sense that the parameters, the box that you've put this in, in terms of sizes on both ends, the average sizes, would restrict the option of somebody coming back with a, you know, a 3,000-square-foot condo, set of condos. But if you, somebody had mentioned, I don't, I've never, I think it's extremely difficult to chase development that, from a lender standpoint, that has both for-sale and rentals in the same structure. But if that was possible, that somebody wanted to mix a for-sale unit at the 1,200, whatever, 1,200 or 1,800, whatever that was in there, and then include apartments also, I'm okay with that, but I don't think I know enough to really opine well on that. So that might be something that you might want to bring back as options when you bring back the draft ordinance, too, unless somebody has a better idea.
Mr. Freeman?
I was going to say, for for-sale, just bring back exactly kind of what Councilmember Jordan was saying when it comes back to us, because there are some nuances that are different in terms of the financials and everything, so.
Ms. Harmon?
I'll go with that. Bring it back would be great. I'll say my instinct, though, is to similarly exempt in the CBD, or if we're talking just the State Street Core, I think that's a conversation that we could potentially have as well. I just want to be so, so clear here. We are talking about such a limited subset of potential projects, such a limited subset of potential. We're not, this is not the whole city. We're removing inclusionary from everything that could ever be downtown. This is like a hyper-specific argument we're having, and it doesn't mean it's not worth having, but I just want to make sure that we don't, we're all so passionate about affordable housing and how do we incentivize it, but like, we're really talking about something very, very small and something that was initiated in a lot of ways out of the conversation to revitalize our downtown. And so I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. So for me, I will absolutely be supporting bringing it back with the cap and to respond specifically to the, let's just wait until the study comes, yeah, I think we're between a rock and a hard place. I have a lot of discomfort. I wish we could, but I think Councilmember Jordan said it, and he's right. Study comes back and then a year and a half later, which, by the way, I won't even be sitting up here. So this is, you know, kind of an important opportunity for me to weigh in on the future of State Street in particular. So I would say that I will continue to support the motion and look forward to the continued spirited conversation around this.
Just for clarification for the motion, maybe for the city attorney, for the for-sale components, if we said to include that, bringing it back with the same exclusion for Central Business District, would we have the opportunity at that point to remove that out if a majority of the council, for whatever reason, didn't and just passed the rental, or would it throw off the entire ordinance?
Yeah, well, then we'd have to bring it back again, right? If we were going to take the ownership out...
Wait, so let's, let's not include the ownership, then?
Yeah.
Let's just get more information on it, because I don't want this to hold up.
The direction would be for staff to evaluate the ownership aspects of the inclusionary and perhaps make a suggestion.
Perfect, yeah. I don't want to include it and then throw the rental part off as well. Okay, thank you.
All righty then. So we have a motion, a second. Does everybody understand the motion? And with that, Ben Clark?
I will read it, Mr. Mayor, and we'll see. I accept all edits here. Motion by councilmembers, Mayor Pretend Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Jordan, to direct staff to return with, sorry, an ordinance for introduction, removing the Central Business District from inclusionary, including recommendation for a number for a cap to replace the planning commission ordinance, sorry, to replace the planning commission recommendation with a staff recommendation for maximum average unit size and for staff to evaluate ownership aspects of inclusionary.
Okay, does that work, General?
Oh, good.
Okay. Let's have a vote, please.
All right. Please go ahead and vote.
Okay, it passes five to two with Santa Maria and Sneddon dissenting. Thank you very much. So thank you to staff for that heavy lift. So with that, we'll go to councilmember committee assignment reports. Anyone? Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you, Mayor House. I think with you as well, we attended the Outstanding Service Award for Officer Kenny Kushner. I also attended the Library Haven opening with the Grace Fisher Foundation and the adaptive space there. It was well-attended at the East Side Library. Was a judge, was very fun for part-time at the Battle of the Brands with the hospitality industry. We attended the zoo update and also a Riviera Association meeting.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, I had a couple that I had, I had the, actually, I had a visit by Antonio Villarigosa, who you may remember was the mayor of Los Angeles, is now a candidate for governor, and he was asking me, what is it that we'd like to see from Sacramento? And I told him I'd like to see a lot less, if that were possible. And so, and he kind of laughed because he brought in his experience of mayor and dealing with superior governing organizations and realizing how honorous that can be. Spoke at the Santa Barbara Zoo at their Roaring Ahead, and it was basically their state of the zoo, and a little introduction, of course, for Charles, the new zoo director. And then I got summoned to the civil grand jury to let them kind of follow up on their questions and our results from the things they gave us to look at, and it was actually a very pleasant and not intimidating situation, but they just wanted some follow-up and appreciated their service and what they are concerned about in their community watchdog aspect, the service they do. So that's all I have. Anybody else with anything? No public comment? And we are adjourned. And we are adjourned.